We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, April 2, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for an invocation by Father Martin Zlatnik of St. Joseph's Episcopal Church followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm not Father Marty. My name is Lynn Jones. My students at the St. Joseph's Episcopal School call me Pastor Lynn, and so I'm covering for Marty. He's out of town. Let us pray. Oh God, Creator of all, lover of all you have created, thank you for these leaders in our community. Bless us all with patience, wisdom, and a rich helping of humor. Teach us always to know and reverence the gift of public service and to strive always to be good public servants. Give us strength and courage to live more and more into our calling and to be guided by principles of truth, duty, democracy, and love. Be in tonight's discussions, be in tonight's arguments if there are any, be in the decisions, be in even the unfinished business. Be present in our diversity and in our ears as we listen to one another, especially, especially those with whom we disagree. Thank you, God, for this city, for the residents, for future residents, for leaders. Finally, God bless all who meet in this place at this time tonight and the work that is entrusted to us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz. Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus. And Commissioner Ty.
Present.
Here. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Approval. Any additions, solutions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
With the consent of the Commission, just adds to future agenda items to, it might not even need to be future agenda items, but I'd like to schedule a closed-door update with regards to police negotiations. I don't know if the city manager can coordinate schedules if we agree behind the scenes or if it has to be future agenda, but...
And the other thing I'd also like to put on future agenda is, for the past few years, we've had a budget meeting the last, the 5th Tuesday in May, and I'd like to continue that as well. Yes?
I have questions on this closed-door update. Why are we doing this? Explain it to me.
Just because we're in negotiations and we haven't had an update, so I'd like to know what's going on.
And this will help it so we don't have to wait till the last minute for negotiations. So I'm okay with that as well.
And that budget, I guess I wasn't okay, sir. I wanted to know why we were just having it. Okay, budget meeting that you requested, what is the date for that again?
That'd be, I believe, March, oh, I'm sorry, May...
Only four Tuesdays.
Are we only have four Tuesdays?
Yeah.
We got, okay. Then we don't have that day.
What is the date?
So, no, there is no 5th Tuesday in May this year. So is that something that we could also try to schedule towards the last week of May? Either, I guess, the 29th? Do we have anything normally on the 4th Wednesday of the month?
Advisory board-wise, I'd have to look as far as the room. I just had to check with you on that. You want to look at that week?
Yeah, we'll look at that. We can bring it back on the 16th.
Yep. Let's discuss it on the 16th because I enjoy my week off when I have them off.
All right.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I asked Pastor to stay back for a few, just to recognize her church and the school. One of her second-grade classes actually came and cleaned up J.C. Park for us this week, so I wanted to recognize her school and her church for that and just teaching our young kids to be involved and to keep our parks in our city clean and beautiful. So I wanted to make sure I recognized you for that and thank you. And please send our thanks and appreciation to those students. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And is there any other things besides adding of the future agenda items? May I have a motion to approve as amended?
Some of.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. Aye, all those opposed. I do hear some comments and a little chatter from the audience. We do hear you from up here, so if you could please, if you're having a conversation, go out in the hallway. In addition, I know, see that we have some people standing. Is there an open seat? Would you please raise your hand so that people who would need a seat can find one? Thank you. Moving on to informational items. Vice Mayor Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. No informational items, no disclosures.
All right. Commissioner Romulus?
Good evening, everyone. Nothing to disclose except for I hope everybody had a nice April Fools' Day and nothing too terrible or bad happened. That is all I have for today, Mayor.
And Commissioner Ty?
I have nothing to disclose at this time.
All right. On March 20, I attended the Palm Beach County Legal Cities Board of Directors Meeting. On the 21st, I attended the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency. On the 20, March 22, I attended Turtle Fest over at the Lagerhead Marina and our South Florida K-9 Competition. If the chief could tell us some of the winners in his presentation, I'd love to hear that. On the 23rd to the 20, uh, the 24th to the 27th, I was in Tallahassee for the Florida Legal Cities Legislative Days. I spoke on Senate Bill 320 and met the Director of Cannabis, Holly Bell, to talk about the possible manufacturing of hemp in the city of Boynton Beach. I met with Representative Casello and Jacquet's office and spoke with Representative Caruso. On the 28th, I was on the Palm Trans Service Board. I went to this Palm Trans Service Board. March 29, I was at the upper-level breakfast for the Business Development Bureau, met with Community Greening regarding one of their grants with the Community Foundation, attended Troy's new business opening, soft opening in Boca, and met with the Ambassador to Qatar. On April 1, I was at the Hispanic Bar Association, and today I was, was at the meeting for the Housing Leadership Council Stakeholders Meeting. I've had conversations with Bonnie Miskel and John Markey regarding the town square, which is on the April 16 meeting, and I have no further disclosures. Seeing none, moving on to announcements. Our first announcement is the 20 Census Day is April 1, 2020. The city of Boynton Beach will be incorporating census messaging and multiple marketing outreach programs and publications over the next 12 months to inform residents about the ease and importance of responding to the census. Laura?
Good evening. I'm Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager. I'm here tonight to share some important information about the upcoming U.S. Census. The 2020 Census will occur next April. As many of you know, every decade, the U.S. Census Bureau counts America's population and uses that data to distribute $675 billion of federal funding to states and communities each year for services such as public safety, Head Start, health care, transportation, and more. To prepare for the 2020 Census, the city will be working closely with Palm Beach County to streamline our marketing efforts in order to reach as much of the population as possible. Our internal census team comprised of employees from various departments have begun meeting on a bimonthly basis to create an extensive community outreach program. It is our goal to create a complete count committee by partnering with representatives from local businesses, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, and other organizations to assist with our outreach efforts. We will be incorporating census messaging in printed publications throughout the year, on our website, social media, and at both city and non-city sponsored events. Thank you.
All right. Our next announcement is the Boynton Beach Utility was awarded the 2019 FWEA Collection System of the Year Award for the medium utility category. This award recognizes utilities for significant accomplishments fostering excellence in the operation and maintenance of a wastewater collection systems. Utilities won the award in the medium-sized utility category for 2019. Joe Paternetti will be present to accept the award when it comes in the mail. And so we'll, we'll hear about it. Do you have a presentation?
Just one sec.
All right.
FWEA, Joe Paternetti, Utility Director. FWEA is a statewide organization, and it's Florida Water, Environment, and Association. And their goal is to provide a clean and sustainable water environment for generations to come. I wanted to bring some of our staff in today, and they're right behind me, actually, and introduce them because they're the ones that have taken care of the collection system. I have Michael Low, our Assistant Deputy Director, and our Supervisor of Field Operations, Tremaine Johnson. We invited a couple extra folks, but they couldn't make it. Jimmy Hart is our wastewater pumping station leader, and Patrick Franklin is our wastewater collection field leader, and they couldn't be here tonight. But I wanted to bring staff because staff is the one that takes care of this collection system for us and does a great job. I've said before, I'd stack our staff up in any utility in the state, and this just proves that we are doing what we should be doing. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. Thank you. I'd like to ask Michael before you go, how long have you been with the city?
March the 13th, 2006.
How many years, sir?
Makes it 13 years and about three weeks.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a clarification question. So just to understand and put it in layman's terms, we are literally winning an award for the quality of our water here in Boynton Beach?
The quality of our maintenance of our water collection system.
Okay.
So we have the best maintenance crew in the state.
That's pretty awesome.
I know it doesn't sound exciting, but keeping sewer in the pipe is a good thing.
Our next announcement is a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Nathan Robles for being the honorary starter of the Seventh Annual Barrier-Free 5K Run, Walk, and Roll, a plaque to show our appreciation to Vinnie DeVito of Resurrection Muscle Cars for building this year's Magic Wheelchair, and a representative of the Realtors Association of the Palm Beaches in Greater Fort Lauderdale will present the check from the proceeds generated at the 5K. A certificate of appreciation will be also presented to the Hunter's Run Community Emergency Response Team in appreciation of their support, and students from the South Tech Academy for creating a promotional video for our event.
Thank you, Mayor. Wally Majors, Recreation and Parks Director, and good evening. As you can tell, we needed a lot of partners to make this great event as good as it is, and we're proud tonight that we could recognize the people that really make it as special as it's become. We'd like to start by recognizing the star of the show, which is the recipient of the Honorary Starter Certificate of Appreciation, and that's Nathan Robles. Nathan is the young boy who received the Magic Wheelchair this year, and as you probably recall from my previous presentation, this is the fourth year that we've done this. We find a child that can really benefit from converting his or her wheelchair into something magical, at least temporarily, and we were very lucky this year that we found this beautiful family to join with us to really bring notice to not only the fact that there are no limitations when you basically have an open mind about what we can accomplish together, but also to, also bring attention to Barrier-Free Park, which is a park that is near and special to us because, again, I think it represents what we really feel is very important here in Boynton Beach, that we're an inclusive community, and we welcome everybody to participate and have fun. So Nathan, again, this year was the honorary starter for our Barrier-Free 5K, and we wanted to present Nathan and his mom a certificate of appreciation. If the mayor can join me, I think it would be even more appropriate if the mayor was the one that presented Nathan and his mom with the certificate, and they're standing right here next to me.
Grandma.
Grandma, sorry, mom. But as we know, grandmas are always available when you need them, and God bless her for that. So again, this is our certificate of appreciation for Nathan and, of course, his family. Every year, when we commit to making the Magic Wheelchair, we always scramble because it's something that, as you can imagine, it takes a lot of skill and expertise and really a passion to contribute to what is really something that is unique and very special here in Boynton Beach over the past four years. And this year, we were very lucky that we were able to find Resurrection Muscle Cars and their owner, Vinnie DeVito, who graciously donated all the time and labor and materials to convert Nathan's wheelchair into something very magical. You see the picture up there, and to show him a very small token of our appreciation, we are going to present him with a plaque with a picture of the Magic Wheelchair. Nathan, I think the mayor is even back there, so it makes it even better. So Mayor, if I can do that? It adds to the festivities. What the heck? All right? And lastly, very quickly, the Magic Wheelchair and Special Deals Event was created to help promote our Seventh Annual Barrier-Free 5K Run, Walk, and Roll. Again, the event was created to not only raise funds for the park, but also to bring attention and notoriety to what we think is a very unique facility that we really do our best to remove as many barriers as possible that will get in the way from anybody having fun. And, and what really helped take the 5K to another notch this year in terms of the quality was the support that we got from the Community Response Team, Community Emergency Response Team from Hunter's Run, and we really appreciated the fact that they were out and around this year. They were very friendly, they were very welcoming, and the fact that they were out there, I think, made everybody who participated in the 5K this year feel even more welcome, which really, I think, requires some praise. So with that being the case, we're going to present this group with the representative tonight is Paul Puyezie? Am I close? With a certificate of appreciation, and again, I'm going to ask the mayor to present that.
On behalf of the 50 members of the Cert Team, the Community Response Team at Hunter's Run, I accept this certificate of appreciation. I want to also thank the Boynton Beach Fire Department because they train us, and we have five people going through their training at this present time. Thank you again.
Okay. And lastly, again, we've been very fortunate that the genesis of this event was brought forth by the relationship that we now have for the past seven years with the Realtors Association of the Palm Beaches and Greater Fort Lauderdale. And they're here tonight represented by, represented by J.T. McClintock. He's the Vice President of Southern Regional, and he's going to be here to present a check to Eric Hammond representing the Greater Boynton Beach Foundation.
Well, we really appreciate this partnership. We were here since the inception of it, and we're extremely proud every year to be part of this. Seven years, and we've contributed over $20,000 in what we've raised during that time, so we're very proud of the partnership. Largest race we've had yet with over 200 participants, so this continues to grow, and each year we foresee that it will continue. Finally, just that with all of this, we feel proud. Boynton Beach, my parents live in Boynton Beach, have run this race for the last three years. This is the region I get to oversee for the Realtors and continue to build relationships with the city and grow, and we've got a great relationship. We have some events we're about to put on, so we're excited to help promote this community and really help as it comes to its next genesis with all the projects that are going on, be part of that with you guys. So with that, this is the proceeds or the remaining proceeds of what we've raised this year. We're very proud to give that to you, and thank you for our continued friendship and partnership in all of this. Thank you.
Yeah, the foundation, I just wanted to say the foundation is very blessed to be able to help the city of Boynton Beach and the residents here. We take great pride in being involved in projects that help to benefit each resident, regardless of their circumstances, that they can find education, recreation, or culture. And we're very blessed to have partners like the Palm Beach Realtors Association, to have a city that stands behind us, you know, and allows us to do good in the, in the community. So thank you.
Group picture. Group picture. Nathan, too, right?
Yes.
All right, so come on, Nate. Nate, great. Come on, Nate.
Day Celebration Event that will be held Saturday, April 6, at the Intracoastal Park from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator. Stephanie, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Soplo, the Recreation Assessment Specialist helping with the Earth Day event. This Saturday, April 6, the city is celebrating Earth Day right here at our beautiful Intracoastal Park. We will kick off the day with a park cleanup starting at 10:00 AM hosted by Boynton Cares, and the main event will start at 11:00 AM and run until 3:00 PM. The first 100 families who attend will be able to walk away with a free native or fruit tree of their choice courtesy of Community Greening, and we will also be raffling off a number of exciting prizes donated by our vendors. The event will feature recycled arts and crafts activities, a yoga demonstration, a vegan food truck, a lionfish capture demonstration, solar energy Q&amp;A, and more. There will be more than 25 vendors on hand to sell eco-friendly products and to provide a wealth of educational information about sustainability and our natural environment. Paddleboards and kayaks will also be available to rent for those who want to enjoy our intracoastal waterway. So to learn more, you can visit gogreenboyntonbeach.com, and we hope that many of you will come out this Saturday, 10:00 AM for the park cleanup, 11:00 AM for the main event, to celebrate our planet and our community and all of our community partners who work so hard to protect the earth. And before we sit down again, we have a gift. Oh, first of all, we should say, the flyer for Earth Day is here. There's several on the table, and we have a gift to present to all of you on the dais on behalf of the Sustainability Advisory Team. And she's, she's on it. These are stainless steel water bottles that were printed with our Go Green Boynton Beach logo as a donation by our nonprofit partner, the Reef Institute, so we thank them for helping out with that. And we welcome you to celebrate Earth Day with your new reusable bottle, and I also wanted to announce that very soon we will be installing a water bottle filling station in this building right out in the lobby. It's being ordered now and hope to install more of those in our facilities going forward so all of us can do our part to reuse, reuse bottles and enjoy Boynton Beach Utilities' delicious tap water and reduce our plastic pollution in our environment. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question. If anybody wanted to purchase a water bottle, where do they get them from?
We're not selling these bottles.
You're not selling them?
No. We will, yeah, we're, we will give some away at the Earth Day event, and we might consider giving them away in the future, but we're not currently selling them.
Well, as long as I know we're going to be giving some away to promote.
We will be giving them away, yes. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our first proclamation of the night will be the, for the week of April 7, 2019, as National Library Week. Library Director Craig Clark will accept the proclamation on behalf of the Boynton Beach City Library. Proclamation: Whereas libraries are not just about what they have for people, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institution where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect, and whereas libraries and librarians build strong communities through transformative services, programs, resources, and expertise, and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all to empower communities and their members, and whereas libraries foster civic engagement by keeping the public informed and aware of community events and issues and by partnering with the other organizations to ensure the needs of the community are being met, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 7th through the 13th of April 2019 as National Library Week.
I'm Craig Clark, Library Director. I just want to thank City Commission and City Administration for their continuous support of the library. We change lives every day, and we couldn't do that without a great staff, so I would like to thank our library staff publicly. They're wonderful, wonderful staff, and thank you again.
Craig, excuse me, before you sit down.
Yes, sir.
I would like to say to your staff, you know, thank you, because every time I go in there, you all, although it seemed like it's cramped to me, you all are always smiling, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Now you all can clap.
Next is proclaim the month of April 2019 as Paralyzed Veterans of America Month. Past President and PVA National Vice President Charles Brown will be accepting the proclamation on behalf of the Paralyzed Veterans of America Florida Chapter. Whereas residing within the boundaries of Boynton Beach, many of our neighbors have served as members of the armed forces, and in doing so honored our community with exemplary dedication, and whereas it is important that we recognize the sacrifices made by our community's veterans who are paralyzed. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month as April as Paralyzed Veterans of America Awareness Month. In the city of Boynton Beach, I encourage the citizens of Boynton Beach to honor our paralyzed veterans because they, they personify the highest ideals of service to countries, sacrifice of self, and perseverance in overcoming adversity. Their stories of hardship and triumph provide life-affirming lessons for all of us. I also encourage the people of the city of Boynton Beach to observe and participate in activities associated with the PVA Awareness Month and reflect upon the sacrifices endured by our community's veterans who are paralyzed. There are many local community service organizations, particularly those serving our youth, that seek involvement in worthy projects, and PVA Awareness Month meets and surpasses that standard. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach to be affixed the second day of April 2019. Beach to be affixed the second day of April 2019. The next proclamation, April 6th, 2019, as Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Youth Day, Octavia Sherrod will be presented to accept the proclamation. Proclamation: Whereas Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc. is a 90,000-member nonprofit collegiate sorority dedicated to the encouragement and promotion of high scholastic attainment, community service, and improvement in the quality of life through its chapters, members, and affiliates located throughout the United States, Korea, Bermuda, Africa, Bahamas, Canada, Germany, and the Caribbean. And whereas Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc., through its mission, seeks to address programs, projects, and concerns that impact socially, educationally, oh, impacts society educationally, socially, politically, and economically. And whereas Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc., in partnership with the City of Boynton Beach Recreation Department, is sponsoring its 22nd Annual Adolescent Youth Symposium on Saturday, April 6th, 2019, and the local members of the ETA Sigma chapter of the Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc. will hold their symposium at the Carolyn Sims Community Center. And whereas Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc., through this year's nationwide symposium agenda, will seek to help youths come to grips with peer pressuring challenge that may deal with making healthy choices, healthy living, healthy generation, and whereas Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc. has called upon the participation of a panel of community authorities to share facts regarding some of the consequences that may be faced by young people who have self-esteem and peer pressure issues. And whereas Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc. is requesting all area junior, senior high schools, sororities, fraternities, social civic organizations, and youth services agencies to support the intent of this symposium by promoting the attendance and participation of their students and youth groups. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, to hereby proclaim
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioner, and we are very grateful for the support and cooperation with the city's Recreation Department. The 2019 Youth Symposium theme is Mission Impossible, a safe space for our youth. We live in a time in which protecting our youth is imperative to survival. Equipping the youth with the skills and competencies to not only advocate for themselves, but also for their peers is important. For parents and guardians, it is important to know and understand what affects our youth, and to be able to support and advocate on their behalf is also important. The goal of the symposium is to create dialogue, to have opportunities for youth to connect to community resources, and to provide inspiration to making positive and long-lasting change. And Frank is with the supervisor with the Recreation Department for the city of Boynton Beach.
All I would like to say is the Recreation Department of the city of Boynton Beach, we strive to make life fun. Thank you.
We now have our Boynton Beach Fire Rescue and Local 1891 would like to recognize Sarah Van Roelke for saving the life of a fellow citizen of Boynton Beach.
Glenn Joseph, Boynton Beach Fire Rescue. I'd like to introduce you to Sarah Van Roelke. It was March 12th, Sarah was working at the Chick-fil-A here in Boynton Beach, and Mr. Ed, where are you, Mr. Ed? He had a significant medical event, the most significant, he went into cardiac arrest. Sarah jumped over, and she'd been trained at Park Vista?
Boynton Beach.
Boynton Beach, sorry. She was in the medical program, and she'd already learned CPR, so she jumped into action, and did such fine CPR. By the time the medics got there, on the way to the hospital, Mr. Ed, he was waking up. He was opening his eyes and wanting to wake up. That's very, very significant. I mean, that's very efficient CPR. So with City Boynton Beach, City Manager and Boynton Beach Fire Rescue, wanna celebrate, recognize, and encourage others to show, do by Sarah's example. So in doing this, we're offering, we're presenting her today with a civilian lifesaving award in the form of a certificate and a beautiful trophy, because it is significant, what she did. I want to make sure, let you remember. So Mr. Ed, we'd like to say a few words. I'll have him come up now and...
Hello. Do you believe in miracles? I do. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for everyone coming together on this joyous day to celebrate my life, your life, our life. My name is Ed Kosick, and I am, I want to start by saying that God is good all the time. He never changes. He's the same yesterday, today, and forever. We are here to honor some incredible individuals that to me are truly amazing heroes, who we see out there every day making a difference and help saving lives each and every day, which I call guardian angels on wheels. These people are in a league of their own and wake up every day, and their main objective is to try to save, save, and protect as many people as they can. I can't think of anybody more noble than these amazing individuals who are first responders, firefighters, paramedics, and police officers. Sudden cardiac arrest, an event and a word that will ever be embedded in my mind. I really didn't know, understand the difference between a heart attack and a sudden cardiac arrest before, and I found out there's a very big difference, and not too many people are aware of it. It can happen to anyone, at any age, at any time, anyone that is in physical good condition or not good condition at all. The window of time to perform CPR or use an AD portable defibrillator after someone faints or passes out is anywhere from four to six minutes before someone dies. This is not very long, and the survival rate is only 5% to 10%. Back on March 12th, only three weeks ago today, I ran nine miles in the morning, did some yoga, then ventured off to Chick-fil-A with my wife to have lunch. I felt I was in good shape. I run, I bike, practice yoga. I'm currently in my 12th week of a 16-week training program to run my fourth marathon, but that afternoon, everything changed. The last thing I remembered is getting, getting very lightheaded, dizzy, and just collapsing on the booth at the restaurant. The next person I would like to recognize is my love, my soul, my everything, my wife, Who witnessed everything from the beginning, and I can only imagine how she felt watching this all unfold in front of her eyes. I felt, feel so bad she had to go through such an emotional chain of events that left her distraught and sleepless for some time. She is the rock of our family, and I don't know what I would do or where I would be without her. I love you. My...
Sir, sir, excuse me. Tell her to come down, please. Yeah, come down. Enjoy it. Yeah.
My, my incredible, loving kids, my daughter Marissa and my son Eddie, who caught the first flight out of San Francisco that day and arrived in the hospital in no time at all to be there to offer any assistance. These two kids are the most loving and caring kids any father could ask for. I am so proud of them, and no words can express. My wonderful sister Rosemary, who is always there for me, as well as my father-in-law and mother-in-law Bob and Isabel Brown. Last, last but not least, my guardian angel Sarah. But what I've been told by the paramedics, and if she did not perform CPR when she did, when I was on the floor, I would have been dead. I had lost my pulse and actually died. Sarah never gave up and continued CPR until the paramedics arrived. All I can say is that I was in that light zone you always heard about, and I was seeing the most beautiful, brightest white light, and I'll go to my grave of what I seen. God delivered on time, and I am forever grateful. I was told when Sarah was called upon, she did not hesitate and approached me quickly in confidence and certainty on what she needed to do, and that was to do CPR. I truly believe people are placed in our lives for a reason, and on that day, Sarah was that person for me. On that, on that day, Sarah was the only person in the restaurant that knew CPR, plus she was actually scheduled off that day, but decided to come into work that day. Call it what you want, but I know it's all in God's plan, and He's always in control. For this young lady, this is only, which is a senior at Boynton Beach High School, it is only the beginning, and she's going on and do some unbelievable and amazing things in the future. There's no doubt in my mind. I am the luckiest man in the world today. Sarah will always have a special place in my heart forever. My guardian angel, my friend, Sarah, I will forever love you.
So we heard on the grapevine that Sarah wants to become a first responder firefighter, and so to commemorate this, we'll give you our challenge coin. So you're a civilian member of the Boynton Beach Fire Department. In addition, Local 1891 has something to say to you.
Hello. My name is Adam Cher with Boynton Beach Fire Rescue, Local 1891. And Sarah, this is a plaque from the International Association of Firefighters for the award for its extinguish service and achievement.
I'd be a mess.
So in Boynton Beach, the city of Boynton Beach, you make lifesaving and being available and trained a very important part of our job. In fact, the city manager required every city employee to become CPR-trained just last year. We'll continue that tradition of doing the best we can for the people that we serve. But everybody has an opportunity to be a hero. Go out, get a CPR class. It's only about three to four hours of your time, and by doing that, you too can be a hero, save a life, and make a difference that is significant in somebody else's life.
She was surprised. No, oh, no.
Our next is a presentation by Chief Gregory for our Police Department. Let the crowd cheer up. Yeah, if you want to give them a minute or so.
Chief, they're not leaving because you're gonna speak, they just, no.
I hate following the fire chief. It's just, it's a no-win situation.
I think the rivalry between you and Chief Joseph just went up a notch.
Yeah. Every week, it's an up a notch. Michael Gregory, Police Chief. And I'm pleased to be here this month of April to present an overview of the Police Department, a couple of highlights. We could literally spend hours, all the details involved in the Police Department, but I won't subject you to that, of course. So I just selected a couple of key topics of what's been going on recently, and just to keep the commission advised in, in the loop of what, some concerns and areas that we're addressing. So we're following a theme that I've been putting out for a while now, and that's reducing crime and strengthening community relationships utilizing community policing strategies. You'll hear me talk often about community policing. I think it's the, the only effective way to police today, today's society, and that'll continue to be prevalent in the presentation. So a quick overview, starting with our gender and our experience in the department. So you see where it talks about the blue columns, it talks about percentage, that's for in the Police Department, and the yellow column is for the city of Boynton Beach, which is the census data. So when it comes to males and females, we're talking about 20% to 80% female to male in the department, whereas in the city, we're 54% female and 46% male. Very rarely does agencies' internal distribution of gender match the communities, but it's something to strive towards. With regard to race and ethnicity, we can see how that breaks out with the percentages in the Police Department versus the community. And the one that stands out the most is in our black officers. In the Police Department, we're at 14% of the department is represented by black police officers, and in the community, we have a population of about 31%. So that's an area we, we see we need improvement. This is important to evaluate, obviously, when we look at our recruiting methods, our training methods, our standards for our new hires, and how we target recruiting strategies Another item I wanted to mention was the years of service. That's another key area, because this enlightens us, informs us of how we want to do our training, and where we want to focus amount of our, a greater amount of our training, and our training dollars. As you can see, I've highlighted in yellow for you that 28% of the department has less than five years of experience. 28%, almost, almost a third, has less than five years of experience. So it's very important that we maintain our training levels, our rehearsals, our practices, our scenario-based training activities on that group. I'd also suggest that a large portion of that group of officers are in patrol. Most often, more of the senior officers get more of the selected positions like in investigations and/or motors, marine unit, and the like. Our younger officers often are the ones who are on the front lines in patrol. So patrol training courses and mentorship programs are where we want to focus with this particular group most significantly. With regard to crime, just going to touch on a couple of things. We've seen these quite often. Those are part-one crimes by the FBI that are designated as the most serious crime in the country, so they always track those, and agencies who report their UCR numbers to the FBI and to FDILY always categorize them in this, this fashion. What it shows is the past three years, 2016, 17, and 18. 18 is in green, and just simply put, we see a reduction in each category in 2018 for the last three years, with the exception of those ag assaults there. Those are considered violent crimes. We've mentioned that in a previous presentation, that that's an area that we are going to maintain focus on. It's roughly about a 20% or so increase from the previous year. That would account for assaults that are serious in nature, serious bodily injury assaults, pointing of weapons at individuals and threatening individuals with weapons, as well as domestic violence cases follow this ag assault category. Depending on what it is specifically, there's more or less of an opportunity for us to intervene. Obviously domestics are one of the most challenging ones for police to intervene in Otherwise, the message is, is, is good, that we're heading in a downward trajectory, and preliminarily, our estimate for 2018 looks like an overall approximately 5% reduction in these serious crime categories from 2017. And then how we attack that crime problem. We, we're focusing on strategic patrolling, and that is as opposed to random patrol. There's a number of different patrol strategies that are in the industry of policing. Random is where officers go out into small areas and they just roam around and take calls as they come up, and they are sent to different locations. Strategic approach is where we're actually going to determine in advance where we want officers to be. We look at where our problems are occurring, and we focus attention in those places specifically. So you'll notice on the right side, we have a little bit of a map of the city with a number of dots on there. You're not really expected to read all of that, but I wanted to give an idea of what we put out now, the, starting last year in 2018, we started putting out this on a daily basis. We're providing this information to the officers and the sergeants in our briefings, which occur twice, four times a day. They can see what happened yesterday, almost like with a football team or basketball team. team. You watch the film of your opponent to see what their strengths and weaknesses are, where their tendencies are to focus on the court, if you're playing basketball, or on the field. And that's what we want to do in policing, if you take that analogy and apply it to us. We want to know, what did the bad guys do yesterday? What did they do the day before? What have they been doing all week long? And how can we intervene to disrupt and/or dismantle the problem? So, where you see concentrations of dots, you might say, we focus on putting concentration of officers in those areas. We've already divided the city strategically, east side of 95 versus the west side of 95, and we put officers, pre-positioned officers, in those particular areas and zones in advance. We want to make sure that they're distributed evenly across the city, that they cover the concentrated areas where these dots are occurring, and that we're there, hopefully, before they happen, so we can intervene and disrupt that activity. It also serves to increase officer accountability. If you're responsible for the entire city of Boynton Beach, it's very difficult to hold you accountable for everything that happens in the entire city. But when you have a smaller area of responsibility, it's much, much simpler to say, okay, this one zone is my responsibility for the next 11 and 1/2 hours, and that's what I've got to focus my attention on. And when I come back tomorrow, that same zone is where I'm going to be focusing my attention, as opposed to the random approach of patrolling the entire city. This is what we've implemented, and we're looking at, seeing successes in continuing the downward trend of the crime, part-one crimes. We supplement that with a community policing approach to policing in the city. So, as you're all aware, we have the motor unit, we have our marine unit, officers have the Segway scooters up in the upper right-hand corner. We sponsor the citizens' police academy every year. I'd like to try to see if we can expand our capacity over time to do that twice a year. It's a very successful program, and it usually fills out with participants, as the commissioner's quite well aware of. And we're focusing on this engagement piece. We can't do just crime fighting. We can't just go out and arrest people and try to intervene. We have to have this interaction to get to know the community. Every officer in this department has to know who lives in their zone, what businesses are in their zone, who those business owners are, and they should know the officers, so we can have a rapport, we have a relationship with them. There will be a time where we have to take some serious action, and we need to have trust. We need to have that level of legitimacy with our community, and we build that using community policing strategies. You're well aware of the Neighborhood Officer Program, so I won't belay that point. We had a presentation on that last month to you. This is one of the slides that you saw previously, has to do with the purpose of that unit to build mutual trust, respect between the police and the community, and try to participate in activities that focus upon building sustainable partnerships. That's very important for the Neighborhood Officer Program, and we've received nothing but compliments from the community about it so far. So, we are deliberately looking to expand that with our strategy going into next year, trying to grow it beyond the two officers that are participating, and creating a training function there, so more officers can learn what those strategies look like that the Neighborhood Officer Programs are implementing, so we can take that around the city. Technology, that's been a real challenge for us in the police department. There's been a number of systems that are outdated and didn't have the capacity to perform or answer the questions that a modern police department needs to ask when it comes to crime analysis and comes to statistical analysis of where is crime happening, what time of day is it happening, is this a real pattern, or is this just something randomly that occurred? And I want to say thank you to the commission for funding a number of technology replacements for the department. So, as you know, last year, you funded the CAD and R mess replacement. That is in progress. We are working with the vendor for training the last several weeks. Equipment has been delivered, training's been being delivered continuously, and we're looking to have that system on and operational by this July. That is the foundation of most police departments. The computer dispatch system is what they interact with when people call 911, and they put your call into a computer. That's the first computer your information goes into. The records management system is what holds all the police reports that we have, all the information about victims, witnesses, suspects, arrestees are in that records management system. So, if those two systems aren't at their fullest capacity to operate, we aren't, because that's where we need to get information from. That's where we need to be able to draw intelligence from. That's where we need to be able to connect the dots and see where patterns of activity are happening. So, we greatly appreciate the investment the city's made in replacing those two key infrastructure systems for us. And you see the reference to FLEX, that's the Spillman FLEX system, is what we're working on installing. You've previously funded the body camera program, as well as our TASER program, reflected in the lower right-hand corner with the Axon TASER. We're rolling out the Smart Force, hopefully, before the end of this year, which will be a software that will help us manage and better maintain a lot of sensitive and criminal justice information that we need in the patrol car. So, that software is built specifically for the efficiency of an officer to work in a car, because that's where their office is. They don't show up, they go to the briefing at the police station every day, but then they get in their cars and they spend the rest of their shift there. So, they need a software similar to like Microsoft Outlook type of thing, but for police work, where they can actually track who are the most wanted suspects, who are the most endangered missing people, adults, juveniles, who's on probation, parole. So, if they have more real-time information at their fingertips, they'll make better decisions. The worst thing is not to have information and end up making bad decisions because you had bad information or no information to draw on. So, our goal is to increase the amount of accurate and real-time information available to the officers, so we can increase the efficiency and effectiveness of the decisions they make on the street with the residents of the city. And all that leads us to the Real-Time Crime Center. That's the gold standard now in policing, and a lot of agencies are implementing these systems. West Palm is standing one up, Delray has one that's going into production, and so is Boca Raton. We are moving in this direction as well with the implementation of the new CAD and Records System, which I mentioned earlier, new crime analysis and analytics software that we'll be procuring with the grants that you heard us receive at previous commission meetings, security cameras being placed at key areas around the city, such as the Town Square Project, and automated license plate readers, and hopefully, we'll be able to, one day, be able to get the ShotSpotter solution. All of those will feed back into our Real-Time Crime Center, which will be like the command center, where we'll have staff available to monitor these systems, respond quickly to real-time alerts from the sensors that are around the city, be able to direct officers out there before the problem gets any worse or gets aggravated, and hopefully, the same time, if not sooner than, we start getting calls from the community about a problem. We'll be able to identify it and respond to it from our Real-Time Crime Center that will be stood up in the next, hopefully, 12 months or less. With that said, I'll take any questions you may have.
No, I think Commissioner Romulus.
Chief, I just want to get some clarification, or just to put it out there, just to educate the community. I've had some residents that are concerned about not seeing enough police presence in their area or in their neighborhood. How can, what can you tell us about the frequency that officers are supposed to rotate throughout certain areas? And also, what can residents do if they would like to perhaps ask for an extra patrol or something like that? I'd like for you to share that with us, please.
Thank you for that question. Yes, we try, as I mentioned earlier, the city's divided into 10 zones. So, we assign the officer to each one of those zones throughout the city. So, 1 through 10, there's an officer, or two in some cases, assigned to those zones. They are responsible for patrolling through there during their shift and checking the streets, checking the businesses, depending on if it's day or at night. And they are allowed to leave. So, if I'm in Zone 1 and you're in Zone 2, and I need a backup or something, you may come over and back up me in Zone 1 with my problem that I have, and then when I'm done, then you can go back to your zone. So, they do move around, they do leave the zones, but they do have an area that they're responsible for, meeting the people there, getting to know them, and building those relationships. As far as if folks want to see more of them, certainly, we encourage them to contact us and let us know if they have a particular issue, like I know folks call us and let us know that they're going to be out of town, or they're going to be away on vacation. We can put an extra patrol on their home while they're away. And if there's a particular crime problem they're concerned about or speeders, we get those complaints all the time from different parts of the city, and we certainly go out and implement appropriate strategies for whatever the complaint is they may have. So, contacting us and communicating with us is what we encourage everyone here in the city to do.
What's the best way for somebody to request an extra patrol?
I couldn't hear you.
The best way for someone to request an extra patrol?
They can just call, call and/or email. We take both, we do it both ways. I believe there's actually even a link on our website that has submit a request or ask for information, because I've gotten a number of folks who've emailed us via the website. So, if you don't have a number, or you don't have a phone or challenge, they can go to the website and do it via a computer at the library or someplace else.
Thank you for sharing, Chief.
Absolutely.
Chief, could you say a few words about the Community Police Academy?
Certainly. We're very proud of that program. I have to say, Officers Rachel Baldino and Denise Strickengoss, they host it and facilitate several weeks' worth of lessons that we share with the community members that come out and participate with the program. It's once-a-week commitment. They get presentations from all the different areas within the department, from the SWAT unit, to the marine unit, to the K-9 unit. We talk about our community policing strategies, we talk about our crime prevention strategies and programs that we have available. This program is really, it's not new, it's been around for quite a while. A number of departments across the country have community policing academies, and I'm glad that we have one here in the city. Like I said, I hope one day we can have the capacity to do maybe two of them a year.
Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Chief, I personally want to tell you, for your Neighborhood Officers Program, I want to tell you thank you. The day they was out passing outdoor hangers in regards to the CRA meeting that's going on in District 2, after they went past a couple of residents' homes, the residents came out and said, "Didn't I just see a police officer?" And I said, "Yeah, I did too." And they're right up there putting outdoor hangers. So, just let them know that they did get noticed being in the community, and we just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. The app, the MyPD app that you can download, is that still working?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And what is the non-emergency phone number that we should call? If we, you know, basically, it's not a 911 emergency, but it's something that we would like to report regarding speeding in the neighborhood.
Right.
Actually, it's 561-732-8116.
So, what should we call?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, sorry.
So, which one is it?
732.
732, yes. That's the one, we have several that folks call on, and we get them from different directions. It's one of the things I want to look at, is coming up with just one that will be something we can advertise and market and share holistically, but right now, we do get people calling from different numbers.
Okay. And then, the next thing is, is that I know some people who call the non-emergency number and request the police presence. Can you explain the, I guess, the triage, you know, how it might take an hour, two hours?
Absolutely. There's 155 positions assigned to the police department. We split those across shifts and across the divisions, so there's not 155 on the street every day. So, there is the possibility that there'll be more calls coming in to the communication center than we have officers to send immediately. So, we have to triage the calls as they come in and determine what is the most important, what's the highest priority call, and obviously, life safety calls go to the top of the list. If someone's in danger, if someone's in a domestic violence situation, if there's been some sort of a violent act, those will be the calls that we put at the top of the list. And unfortunately, the property crime-type calls or informational or civil-type calls, they'll fall a little bit lower on the priority list. And as we work our way through with the most significant, we'll work our way down till we knock out every single one of them. But it may take a little bit longer during peak times to get to every single one of them.
All right. And then, my last one is, is that, you know, I really enjoy the coffee with a cop, but I want to know if you could do it on a weekend, either Saturday or Sunday, because a lot of the other, you know, people who would like to have a coffee with a cop or working Monday through Friday.
Certainly, we can look at that.
So, I'd like to see that occur. And is there any other questions? Yes.
Not a question, but a final comment. Chief, when a lot of citizens call, they are complaining to me, they're saying that, why do we have to give our name and our address and have to meet with an officer? They said, you know, that turns them off right there. They said, "We don't like calling because they ask us too many questions." All the questions that they ask, they can be already out here. We gave them the address, what the problem is, and I'm just saying, is there anywhere they can alleviate that problem? I'm just saying, do you want an officer to show up at your residence? The problem is not at my house, it's across the street, you know? So, this is why a lot of people don't feel comfortable calling, you know, the police department here in this city. So, we probably need to work on some kind of way to let dispatch or let whoever takes our calls know, saying, you know, don't drill them like saying, you know, they don't want to get as much as you can, but, you know, don't hammer them. I'm just saying, concentrate on the problem itself.
I agree. They should not be hammering anybody for that information. You can make a call to the police department anonymously, and we do take anonymous calls and complaints. Obviously, if there's something critical going on across the street, we want to get as much information as we can. Sometimes, we get, as you can imagine, calls do disconnect, and we want to know who we're talking to, so we can call them back and make sure we have the accurate information. I know from past experience, there are occasions where you get on the scene and you don't see what was described to you on the call. So, we want the dispatch to be able to call someone back, and can you get further details? Can you find out what color the house was? Any number of things that we just need follow-up information on. If people don't want to provide it, then they're not required to. We certainly do it, but for efficiency purposes and being able to get accurate information, we would like to have someone that we can talk to to validate that there was a concern and complaint made.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to appointing eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. We have one applicant for the Historic Resource Preservation Board on a regular basis. Oh, yeah, we did skip the public audience. Let's do that. Let's go to a public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Sorry, I slide up my agenda too much.
Today, I will go first, not last, because I have some work to do. Dr. Piotr Blas.
There you go.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Piotr Blas, 113 Tara Lakes West, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. Number one, as some of you know, I'm from IDF, and I have seen heroes, and Sarah is a hero, that young lady, in every way. What I will do is, I will write a letter of recommendation for her and place it at Boynton Beach High School, so she can go to any college, Harvard, Michigan, with a scholarship. I think we need to recognize this wonderful person that she is. The second thing is, the chief of police just spoke, and things are moving in the right direction. My intelligence indicates that they need 34 more officers, 34 more officers. So, later on, in my short three minutes, I will try to suggest how we can get the funds to give them 34 more officers and to use the high tech that is required. So, now, let's come back to the issues that were raised in the election. I obviously recognize and honor everybody who won the election, but there were some issues that I think we are all agreed on, and Jason Katz is my representative and the mayor also. We will be working on getting energy from the Gulf Stream. This was always meant to be a private-public partnership. Since I am not elected mayor, I'm creating a private company to do that together with the city. And that is not very controversial, and that could bring a lot of revenue. And for example, we could hire additional police officers. In the same spirit, the University of Boynton already exists. You will see me often at Office Depot doing research and meeting people. So, that will continue. The Personal LoJack project that I talked with the chief Carter also. But finally, I have to say something about myself. I am running for US Congress from Boynton Beach. I think it's District 21. Currently, Congresswoman Franklin has that seat, and I'm running for that seat. And I hope the whole city will support me in that. And a little more controversial, I am defying the nativist clause of the Constitution, which I think is unfair, and I'm also running for United States President. Thank you.
So, regarding the energy from the Gulf Stream, I was setting in with the city of Lake Worth Beach now, and they are actually working with FAU and the Department of Energy of Florida to get the energy from the Gulf Stream. We don't have electric utilities, so we'd have to create one of those first before we can do that. So, I just want to let you know, it is happening, but not in the city of Boynton Beach.
Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. I have a couple of announcements tonight. First, today, April 2nd, is World Autism Day, so it is wear blue for autism. And I'm pleased to announce that the Schoolhouse Museum, Children's Museum, completed their training with the Center for Autism and Related Disabilities at FAU to become an autism-friendly business, and we're working toward adding some additional time on specific weekends to open for children with autism, families and children with autism and related disabilities, so they can come to the museum. so they can come to the museum and experience it on their own without the cacophony of noise that might otherwise be there. Additionally, or in addition, today, we filmed a television commercial for the Schoolhouse Children's Museum. It's underwritten by Nonprofits First. It airs this Thursday on WFLX. It's also going to promote our event, and then we'll be able to use it on our website going forward. Next, I have to remind everybody of Too Cool for School. Now, I can't see a thing, by the way. Too Cool for School is on April 11th from 5:30 to 9:30 at Benvenuto. Tickets are on sale now. You can purchase them via our website or at the museum. They are $125. It's going to be a great event. We have some awesome auction items, including an electric guitar autographed by Bruce Springsteen and some fabulous trips. Lastly, and I'm going to put my glasses back on so I can see, the following Saturday, April 13th, is Art in Bloom at the Schoolhouse Children's Museum. We partner with the Boynton Beach Garden Club. They interpret works of art done by the elementary school children at Pomosa School of the Art. It is free for anybody to come. They'll be, will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and if you'd like to come out on Friday evening from 5:00 to 7:00, there is an opening reception. Thank you.
Don't go. I need to ask the question. The attendance at the Schoolhouse Children's Museum with everything that's happening downtown, is it up or down?
The first three months, it was decidedly down. We've actually been holding our own, and believe it or not, we had quite a good march. Part of that is a function of cold and spring break. We actually had one of our best days, the day when they had the torrential downpours. We had 443 people come through the museum in one day. That's a lot of people in a small space in one day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
I'm curious, have you, first of all, congratulations on filming that commercial. I think that would probably be a great just generator of getting people to know more about the museum and getting them there. Have you also looked into working with the Palm Beach County Film Association TV channel? Because they actually showcase and broadcast a lot of our local amenities into the hotels, like the Marriott and different things. So I think that would also be an entity that you should also look into potentially for just getting your name ID and getting the organization out there and having more people know, especially tourists, to come and visit the museum, because it's a fantastic amenity.
That's excellent. I will bring that up with our PR firm and get on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Susan, I'd like to thank all that you've been doing with the Children's Schoolhouse Museum. You know, I know that it's such a historical building and that we are building around it our new town square and making sure that Boynton Beach is family-friendly, and really appreciate all that you do for our museum.
Thank you. It's a pleasure working there. Thank you.
Here you go, Colin. Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. First of all, I'd like to say, Earth Hour, which I mentioned at either the last commission meeting or the CRA meeting, was last Saturday night. It was very successful. I know I got at least six houses on my street to participate, and that's part of the World Wildlife Fund. They've been doing it for about 15, 20 years, and you turn off your lights for an hour. So yay, it's nice to see more people in Boynton participating. I'm also, I guess I'll question, why there's, the parking space on Ocean Avenue in front of Dewey Park has been little barriers put up? What is the purpose of that? We already don't have enough parking. When you restripped Fourth, you took away about four additional spaces, and I'm wondering why we took, got rid of another space?
Traffic reasons. Because people, we took away the stop signs, and so we need to make sure that the cars heading south on Fourth did not get into an accident.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, no problem. What I passed out to you is a blurb from, I saw this on TV, and it's about bee rest stops, because it turns out bees can't go very far before dying if they aren't recharging their little batteries, because they fly so fast. They need to have a constant source of food, and I was thinking something like this might be something we want to consider adding in our public areas. And I see Commissioner McCray looking kind of confused, but remember, if all the bees die, all humans die within three to five years, so we do need to work on maintaining our bee population. And even if you don't want them in your yard, they're welcome in my yard. But we, you know, this impacts our ability to pollinate all of our fruits and vegetables. A lot of people have flowers, fruits and vegetables in their yards. I know some of my neighbors actually have broccoli growing in their front yard, and it's really quite successful. But we do need the bees, and I thought this is something that we could add, because I keep pushing you guys to put wildflowers in the median strips. That would definitely help. And this is a nice little story. I gave you the link to the actual news story that was on TV. I saw it a few months ago, and I've been trying to hunt it down, and I finally found it today. And I thought you'd enjoy seeing it. It's a short little video. It's about two or three minutes, so it's well worth your time, and it's something we really should be considering, I think, as we move forward in the city with whatever it is we're doing in town square and elsewhere. And thank you for your time.
My name is John Trott, 2623 Lake Drive North. I'd like to introduce and invite you all in the dais and everyone in the audience to a really amazing event that's going to be going on in about a month. On May 4th, it'll be in Delray, but it'll be a free event. It's a Saturday from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I'm working with a great event called the Haitian American Culture Day. It's going to be amazing. It's really focused to celebrate the strong and vibrant Haitian-American community in all Palm Beach counties. So it's in Delray, but it's for everyone in Palm Beach County, and not just Haitian-Americans, everyone. It's going to be fabulous. We have Beto David, if any of you are familiar. He's a local Haitian author, very prominent community leader. He'll be kicking it off, starting it as the launch of Flag Day. And from there, we're going to have music, dance events, a fashion show, there'll be literature presentations, amazing art exhibits, and a lot of civic presentations. It's very civic-focused and focused on encouraging civic engagement. So I wanted, again, invite everyone here to come on out. It'll be a lot of fun, free event. It's in Delray Beach in front of the City Hall, right there by the tennis courts. Again, May 4th from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And if you have any other questions or you want to check it out, you can go to HaitianAmericanDay.org. And I have some flyers, if I can pass it to you. Colin, can you just? Thank you.
Herb Shaw, 1711 Woodford. Three weeks and a half, three weeks ago, I was up at the golf course, and a gentleman back there laid his job on the line. I was up there, I was on a golf board. I helped get the things going when I was on a golf board. You've got to come up to the golf course, they're making money, it's a crown jewel, and if the man laid his job on the line and it's making money, I was there on a half-rainy day, the place was mobbed. You just got to get, I hate to say it, you just got to get up there. It's a jewel, it's part of a city course, and we have a golf course that's equal to none. And if the man laid his job on the line, I think it's incumbent upon the summit of commissioners to get up there, okay? I don't pull any punches, as you know, I tell it the way it is. On another matter, I have served this city and the county in many aspects, and the fire chief, I'd like him to stand along with Ron.
Herb, you've got to speak into the mic.
The fire chief, I have done numerous things up at the traffic center, on airplanes, and in many other areas by the training that the CERT program gave me. I was one of the oldest members. I had to resign due to different situations. But CERT is a program, and I'm very proud. I still carry my ID card, and I will help, and I'm good at what I do because I was trained by CERT. I, I'm the only one left in my community. There is nobody left because I just breathed my capacity, and I have to take care of myself. I'll be 88 near the end of this month, so I've got to keep going. I also had to give up the VA, my volunteerism up at the VA, got too much for me, you see stuff up there. And I wish people would go up there and take care of the vets, help them, even bring dogs up there. They, they just need people to come up there. I had a bad incident when I got out of the Marine Corps on 42nd Street and Lexington Avenue, but I was on a, on a southeast Honor flight, so that kind of does things for me. When I got out of the Marine Corps, I was spit on by American citizens who called me a murderer. And I can tell you one thing, if I had a revolver, enough said. The Vietnam vets got it worse than I did. And it's tragic that American people treat servicemen like this, veterans. It's deplorable, and I don't think the American people know what war is, or to lose, or to lose people, friends and buddies. So I'd like, and then I would like to see a picture of Bob Ensler up there. He was the best commissioner in my judgment that we ever had. And Commissioner Katz, Commissioner Romulus, Mayor Grant, you raised to that. I can't tell you, I'm glad you got re-elected. Every three, all three of you. The gentleman in District 4, I don't know, so I give report cards, I'll let you know how you do. Commissioner McCray, you're a piece of work, and I mean that. I mean that very respectfully. Keep telling the jokes, I'm going to miss you. But let's see that picture back up there. He was the, all he hopefully rise to what he was. He was the best. And the program that you're working on for the city to restore, he put, he put a lot on the line for that. Thank you very much for letting me run a little overtime.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say to her, Mrs. Suss, what? I like that, sharp. Right, I had a, right, I had the privilege of working with Commissioner Ensler, and what you, I had the privilege of working with Commissioner Bob Ensler, and what you said, it is true. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I only brought seven, seven copies, I apologize. My name's Kevin Homer, 2505 Lake Drive North. Boynton Cares has its next cleanup. It'll take place Saturday at 10:00 a.m. The sponsors this time will include Florida native fish and tackle, as well as the sea mist. They're donating some gift cards as raffle prizes. Fifteen months ago, I started this eco-cleanup group, and much in part of an ongoing issue we are facing in our intercoastal waterway. While we've had tremendous support from volunteers, city leaders, schools, local businesses, and the media, we have been facing an uphill battle with the violators. As the mayor can attest, in attending the majority of our cleanups, and through photos provided to each of you, much of the pollution found along the Boynton shoreline stems from boats anchored close to our shoreline. FWC recently cited a local boat owner for the disposal of a plastic inflatable boat in the protected mangroves. Another month, volunteers hauled off another boat in the thick of the mangroves containing a bottle of bleach, a car battery, and other personal items belonging to the boat violator. This is the second battery found in the mangroves. As a reminder, just outside this building sits a critical seagrass habitat, part of the Lake Worth lagoon system. While there is no guarantee that the pollution mentioned above has harmed the protected seagrass, the dragging of anchors in strong winds has certainly prevented the resurgence of the seagrass. Three law enforcement agencies have stated their hands are tied during INCA community meetings. However, we have good news, which I shared with Chief Gregory yesterday, a leader, the leader in community policing. Florida Statute Chapters, Chapter 327, Section 4107, Letter E states that law enforcement has the ability to ensure that any of the boats anchored in our, in our waters have 72 hours to request the boat owner lift the anchor and demonstrate that they have means for propulsion. There are several boats on the water, two of which are inoperable, inoperable. If boat owners are selfish enough not to carry insurance, not to have means to move when strong winds are heading for Boynton, light their boats with US Coast Guard-approved navigation light so that other boaters do not hit them. Do you really think that they are pooping, that they're, they are pooping in bags and disposing of their waste properly ashore? Ah, this includes bleach and other toxic materials as well. The photos will give you your answer. I'm not suggesting that the boats do not have the right to be out there, any more than a person has a right to get into their car and drive on 95. But if you get into your car under the influence and you drive 100 miles an hour, the person's violating the law. As mentioned in a prior commission meeting two months ago, lagoon keepers removed and impounded one of the anchored boats as it was a safety hazard environmental, as it was a safety hazard to the environment and residents. While the local government has asked us to clean the park and natural areas a part of Earth Day event this Saturday, we are going to ask for something in return. We ask that the city take the, take the lead role in enforcing this statute mentioned before. The reason this law exists, one paragraph left, the, the reason this, this exists is to ensure boats have the means to leave the critical seagrass habitat prior to a storm's arrival. I recently learned that we have the tools, resources, and legal right to enforce the laws to protect our citizens, property owners, local rep businesses, and fragile environment. I have been asked to speak before the FWC State Commissioners Meeting in July. I want to be able to share a positive message to those commissioners and use Boynton Beach as the example for the rest of the state of Florida. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And any final call for public audience? Saying none, we're moving on to administrative. Our first is to appoint eligible members to vacant positions on city advisory boards.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Lowe.
I'd like to actually nominate him for a regular position.
Sure, is that yours?
Yeah, it's, it's, your name's first for the alternate.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have positions available on the library board, two alternates on the Historic Resource Preservation Board, two student positions on the Education and Youth Advisory Board, four positions on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and one on our arts commissions. And next is Resolution Number 19-033, appoint a city commission representative and alternate to the countywide intergovernmental coordination program.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to serve in this capacity.
I will nominate Commissioner Pincirga.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number R19-034, appoint a city commission.
We need an alternate also.
Can you remain as that alternate, Lori?
Sure.
All right. So we nominate our city manager.
Nominate Lori LaFerrier as the alternate.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-034, appoint a city commission representative and alternate to the Transportation Planning Agency, formerly known as the MPO. I've been doing that for the last three years. I'm currently on the TPA Steering Committee to become independent. I'd like to make, and I'm also the alternate for the Metropolitan Planning Organization Advisory Council.
And you're doing a beautiful job. Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm supposed to be the alternate, though.
I'd like to volunteer as the alternate.
Are you okay with?
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Appoint a city commission representative and alternate to the Palm Beach County League of Cities. I sit on the Board of Directors, so I'm going to be there anyway. So if someone would like to join me?
I would like to join you, Mayor.
All right. So may I have a nomination?
For the position, or which one?
For the representative of the city commission.
So would that be you, Mayor?
No, that'd be Ty.
Aye, so move.
We need an alternate as well.
Yep.
Okay.
I can be the alternate.
Okay.
So, do I have a second for Commissioner Ty as the representative and myself as the alternate?
Second.
All right, yes. Mayor, there.
I think the, the seat for the large city.
This is a different position. I'm on the Board of Directors.
Okay, so this is the voting delegate, and it's not replacing that seat?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
This is voting me into the, the board.
Okay.
All right. And we, do we have a second?
Clarified Commissioner Pincirga is the representative, and you would be the alternate.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. We have a second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed. Proposed Resolution Number 19-036, appoint a city commission representative and alternate to the Coalition of Boynton West Residential Associations. Vice Mayor Katsky would like to be our representative?
Yeah, I'd request reappointment to be the COBRA representative.
So moved.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And I put it on my calendar to attend, but if someone else would like to be the alternate, I'll be the alternate then. May I have a motion?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, you'll be the alternate.
You don't have to do it all.
All right. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Motion, nomination for Commissioner Romulus to be the alternate to the Coalition of Boynton West Residential Associations. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
At the record, speak, I have nothing to do.
I don't believe that.
Congratulations to all.
Yes. Consent Agenda. Matters in this section of the agenda are proposed and recommended by the city manager for consent agenda approval of the action indicated in each item, with all the accompanying material to be, become a part of the public record and subject to staff comments. Would anyone like to remove an item from consent agenda?
Yes.
Which one? Yes.
I'd like to pull Item 6A and B.
All right. I'd like to pull Item 6F. Is there any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, begin with Proposed Resolution Number 19-037, authorize the city manager to sign an agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Florida Power and Light Company for FPL to install and own electric vehicle charging and related equipment on city property. Yes, Colin?
Yeah, I think FPL would like to do a little quick presentation.
Sophia?
Sophia, there you go.
Evelyn, Mayor Commissioner Sophia Eccleston, External Affairs Manager with FPL. And I have my colleague Anoush, who is our project development manager. Just wanted, before I have Anoush talk about the project, I just wanted to say, when we first rolled this out, Boynton Beach was the first city that we wanted to bring it to because your staff and your city manager is just amazing to work with. And as you guys have seen with a lot that we have done, with the solar canopies and the solar tree in Boynton Beach, we wanted to make sure we continue to bring you guys all the renewable initiatives that we have, because, you know, you guys are the sustainability city. And so we appreciate the partnership that we have. And I'll let Anoush talk about the EV chargers that we are doing a program on right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, thank you, Sophia. My name is Anoush Choxsey, I'm with Florida Power and Light Development Team. We're here today as part of FPL's exciting new pilot program focused on electric vehicles. This is actually a continuation of an amazing partnership that we've had with the city and Florida Power and Light, which started with three FPL SolarNow installations, the largest installation in the county by, you know, several orders of magnitude, in fact. And that was made possible by the commitment from the city, the council, and the efficiency of the Boynton staff. And because of this commitment, related to the canopies themselves, over 100 megawatt-hours of clean renewable energy has been generated today, to date. So as we look to continue that journey with the installation of electric vehicle charging stations, which FPL is providing at no cost to the city, in great locations throughout the city's new hub, I think that's a huge step forward, and we thank the city and the council to be great stewards of sustainability, and we look forward to the initiative.
Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
Yes, you mentioned the city's new hub. Can you tell us where? Is it just downtown, or is it going to be some areas, like in the mall and other places? Are you at liberty to disclose?
Yes, right now, we're planning just the town square downtown area. We're gonna keep talking to them.
Yeah, and we're looking at.
We do like their cooperation, and we continue talking to them to see what we can do together.
Yeah, and we're looking at up to about 12 charging spaces, so a substantial number of stations throughout the city hub there.
Excellent. Well, I really appreciate all that you're doing. You know, the SolarNow program that Boynton Beach has, I'm really proud of that, because, you know, it's the residents, you know, promoting solar energy for the community. So may I have a motion to approve?
Oh, moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next is Proposed Resolution Number R19-038, authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with property registration champions doing business as pro-champs for registration and monitoring services of vacant, abandoned, and foreclosed property within the city. Commissioner Romulus, you have a question?
Yeah, I didn't know if they were just gonna tell us before I should just ask, but my questions are, how does this help us with the distressed properties on federal highway? And also, how are we making the revenue from this?
What was the second part of the question?
Revenue.
Oh, so Tim Howard is assistant city manager. This is a vendor we've used for the last seven or eight years. They register foreclosed and bank-owned properties. If you remember during the recession in 2008, a lot of properties went into foreclosure. The city had difficulty trying to track down, contact people with the banks who owned them for maintenance issues, boarding of issues, if there was an issue with the property. So we entered into this contract where we require the banks to register foreclosed and abandoned homes annually with the city. So then we have a point of contact, that if there's an issue with the property, we have someone to contact right away to take care of it. So any foreclosed or abandoned properties on the federal highway, we should have a contact for maintenance issues, or code violations, or things like that. The revenue at the height, we received about $266,000 a couple of years ago. Last year, I think we received $110,000. It's a $250 registration fee, we get $150 of it. And it varies as the number of foreclosures go down, our revenue goes down.
Okay, and are we seeing cooperation, I would say, from these property owners, especially again along federal highway? Because I know we've had a lot of issues with some distressed properties there.
I'm not sure of federal highway in particular, but I, citywide, we are seeing responses from the bank, and we're able to get them to mow the grass and things like that over the years.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item 6F is authorize the Resolution Number 19-042, approve and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and letter of authorization with J.J. Kane for disposable vehicle equipment submitted by the Fleet Division to declare 50 vehicles, equipment, and surplus, and approve the disposition of these items via auction using various means such as J.J. Kane Live Auction, J.J. Kane Online Auction, and GovDeals.com. I am aware of South Tech Academy's Automotive Choice Program, and I'd like to donate one of the vehicles, not one of the more expensive ones, but one of the less expensive ones, to that academy for them to work on. And I also learned that Park Vista, which is, also may, has the same automotive, and, you know, speaking, I'd like to authorize the city manager also to speak with those principals to see if they're willing to accept one or two vehicles that we are off, one vehicle each that we would offer them.
Mayor, I am, I'm going to concur with what you're saying, I'm just saying, you know, but I'm like you, I don't want us to give the best one away, but I don't want to give them the rectum either. I'm just saying, you know, let's give them something to work on so that we'll have something to learn. I'm just saying, you know, don't give the last thing that we have to push on the lot, you know, to them. I'm just saying, both of them, I'm just saying for them to learn. I'm in favor of giving both of those individuals, you know, those schools, a vehicle from, you know, this list that was given to me.
All right, I appreciate that. Can I get that on a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the remainder of the consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Bids and purchases over $100,000. Approve utilizing the Palm Beach County contract with Aquafire Maintenance and Performance Systems, Inc. of West Palm Beach, Florida with the same terms, conditions, specifications, and pricing. This contract will utilize for well-rehabilitation services on an as-needed basis with an estimated annual expenditure of $315,000. Palm Beach County complied with public contract bid requirements equal to or exceeding the city of Boynton Beach requirements.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Approve a 10% contingency for the underground utility work associated with the District Energy Design-Build Contract with the Haskell Company in the amount of $307,357, increasing the total cost to $3,380,929.
Second for discussion?
Yes.
The reason I want to have this discussed, I'd like for the city to explain to the citizens why we are going up now to 300-plus thousand dollars, I'm just, 307,357 dollars, I'm just saying, you all know, but let them know why we're doing this.
Yeah. Colin Groff is assistant city manager. Yeah, absolutely. When this project came through for approval the first time, it was part of the bigger town square project. These are directly, this is, this is part of the project directly funded by utilities. Unfortunately, my fault, I forgot to put the contingency on the budget. So this is to add the contingency for the unforeseen conditions that come up while you're building utilities, such as unknown valves, things in the way, conflicts. So staff can work through those as they find them in the field. So this is standard on all of our contracts, we just did not put it in this one, so we're coming back to you for approval at this time to add that contingency fund to the project.
I spoke to the city manager, and she said that you all find, found some items that was underground. I'm just saying, you know, this needs to be spelled out. I understand what you're doing, but, you know, you need to let the citizens know that when you all got over there and started working, that you found some items underground.
Right, that's what we found. We found some valves and things that we didn't know were there, we found some lines that we didn't know were there, and we have to correct those as we find them. So we do that on every project, we just didn't put the contingency in this one. So, so we are fixing them as we go, so we have a very well-built system when we're finished.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-043, authorize the city manager to sign the proposal from Crom Coatings and Restorations, a division of Crom LLC in the amount of $181,200 for the repair of five potable water storage tanks. This is a sole source based on the warranty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion from the board?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Colin, how long have these potable, I like to say that, portable potable water storage tanks been used before they have to be replaced, life cycle?
So, they have to be, they last 60, 70, 80 years, sometimes longer. They have to be inspected every five years, requirement of our permit. They're inspected for structural integrity, for leaks, for cleanliness, you know, any kind of corrosion. And whatever's found during that inspection has to be repaired, professionally prepared, repaired, and then inspected, and certified for the Department of Environmental Protection to ensure that our drinking water is of high quality.
So this is more or less like a repaired?
Yeah, every five years, we will find things that we repair to keep the tanks in good condition.
That's what I needed to hear, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Award bid for digital monument signs to Don Bell Signs of Port Orange, Florida as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder in the amount of $117,157 plus a 10% contingency for a total estimated amount of $128,872. The initial bid term is for one year with an option to renew for two one-year terms. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second for discussion?
Yes, would staff like to explain what we're getting here?
That's discussion.
I've prepared an image. I'm Gary Dunmire, city engineer. I've prepared an image, I think John will put it up for us, showing you what the signs will look like. Wanted to say that the signs have six-inch letters, you have room for four lines of letters, or words or phrases, and this is what a typical sign would look like.
Realized that when we started demolishing City Hall, we lost our monument sign out there that would, you know, post our commission meetings and so forth, and we really felt the need as we took, look around, it'd be really nice to have these throughout the city. So this first phase will get three of, three of them installed. Ezel Hester at Harmoning Park down at Woolbright and Seacrest, and MLK in Seacrest at Heritage Park. And this is a multi-year contract, so the next year, we're funding for two more along the Congress corridor, the north end and the south end. So it really helps us get information out on our events, as well as our commission meetings, public meetings, CRA meetings, what have you, in a much nicer fashion than what we had before.
Washington, where the city of Boynton logo will go?
I actually have an accountant for that, but I'm sure I can have it inserted right next to the verbiage at the bottom.
To the right or to the left?
Either.
Okay, just don't forget it.
No, sir, I will not.
Thank you.
And what is roughly the width and height of the screen?
It's three feet tall and seven feet wide.
What was, what was our original sign for this?
Right now, at the Hester Center, there's an aerial sign, it's mounted on a tower, and it's probably about the same size. Overall, this will be a monument sign on the ground. It'll be the same size, but it'll be bulkier, if you will.
All right. The only way, the reason why I ask is because I know most of the times our CRA does the four-foot-by-eight-foot signs.
Yes, they do.
And so, but this is.
Those throughout the city in different areas, but we could also add to these.
Well, no, I was just saying, if we do that here with four feet by eight feet.
Uniformity.
But is this compliant with our city sign permitting ordinance?
Right, I showed it to Ed, and he did not cringe, so that's a good sign.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, any other questions from the board?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Thank you. So we can change these at will as events come up?
We can, and Eleanor is not with, or near me, so I can tell you that I was intending for her to do it when I was talking to the suppliers. And the idea is, it's a proprietary software that you can load images, are MPEGs, moving images, and then you can put words on top of it, and you can do all the formatting that goes with it. So it's supposed to be easily done, and it's something that you can do from your desk. They're connected via the internet, these, each of these monument signs will have self-service. And so when a sign needs to be changed, it's just gonna be a simple matter of uploading a new file to, to it. And so these messages can stay on for 30 seconds and then scroll to the next one, and they should be able to do the fancy, you know, they should have moving images if we want, or we can have them, you know, like zoom in like we do on PowerPoint slides, you know, our kids get on the PowerPoint, and they're like, oh, I want it to zoom in from the left. We should be able to do that as well if we want.
Okay.
Little mini billboards.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, and what's their lifespan?
Three to five years, providing bricks don't hit them. But what I've done in that vein is, they are covered with a, with a latex, or not a latex, it's a laminate, some type of laminate, and I've asked the manufacturer, if it's hit with a brick, will it damage the struck, or the image behind it? And they say it is not. And just in case the covering is damaged with each sign, we will get replacement covers that we'll put into storage should something happen.
How much are those coverings?
The coverings are included, so they didn't tell me what they were per unit.
I know that we had issues over at Ezel Hester when we got, when I got elected, and so I just want to know if we have cameras around that area as well. And so I got a head nod, thank you.
Well, it's something we can certainly consider, because there's gonna be electricity provided.
You know, it's, we won't ever put a target on there, how about that? Yes, Commissioner McRae?
Thank you. I need to know who's gonna be the go-to person, who's gonna monitor what goes on those and what comes off.
Right.[1690.03]
City manager's office, okay. Is that where they'd be able to turn a request in, citizen, you know, okay.
Thank you, Gary.
You're quite welcome.
All right, thank you.
So moved.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing, seven PM, and or soon thereafter, as the agenda permits, the city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Item A is tabled to April sixteenth, moving forward with proposal ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero one, nineteen dash zero zero two, nineteen dash zero zero three, and item C, approve Country Trail PUD, site, new site plan to construct a new development with twenty-six two-stories, single-family residents and associated site improvements on a five-point-seventeen-acre site, applicant M two zero, oh no, M two D, Country Trail LLC. Jim, would you like to read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance nineteen zero zero one, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, annexing five-point-one-seven acres of land that is contiguous to the city limits within Palm Beach County, that will upon annexation constitute a reasonably compact addition to the city boundaries, providing that the proper land use designation and proper zoning of the property shall be reflected in separate ordinances to be passed simultaneously herewith, providing for conflict severability, providing that this ordinance shall be filed with the clerk of the Circuit Court of Palm Beach County, Florida, upon adoption and an effective date. The first two items, Mayor, are legislative in nature, the remaining items are quasi-judicial, we frequently allow the applicant to agree to make one presentation on all of those, but the votes, of course, are separate, and if the first item, nineteen zero zero one, which is annexation, does not pass, then there'll be no need to proceed on to the others. So if the applicant wants to come forward and indicate their consent.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioners, for the record, my name's Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning here, representing the applicant, and yes, we are in agreement. Just want to make sure I've abbreviated my presentation down, I'm just confirming that the presentation at the first reading is still part of the record.
The presentation from the first reading is part of the record, so if we're ready to go, anybody who intends to testify in this proceeding, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come to the microphone to speak, if you have any special qualifications to testify, if you're an architect, an engineer, planner, something of that nature, please let the commission know so they could weigh the value of your testimony in that regard. If you have other exhibits that you wish to be made part of the record, they do need to be identified, and copies need to be made to the clerk, and made available to the commission for their consideration.
Before we begin, I did have a text message with Bradley earlier, and so I wanted to disclose that. I also spoke with a couple of different residents from Serrano Estates at Silver Lake, I'm sorry that I was not able to speak with everyone, and I apologize in advance.
Yeah, I too was supposed to call Bradley Miller back today, but I was unable to due to my schedule, so I did not actually talk to him, but I was supposed to.
All right.
Any other disclosures that...
I also received a text message, if we need to disclose that, yes.
Yep.
Text message, but I said, no way.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, again, my name is Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning, and the address is five oh eight East Boynton Beach Boulevard, here in Boynton Beach, land planner for the last thirty-two many years, and here in the city of Boynton Beach since nineteen ninety-seven. At our, about three weeks ago, I guess it was, at the first reading, we did go through a pretty lengthy presentation for this property, which is a little over five acres, that's located just west of Congress, and north of the Barrier Free Park, north of the tennis center, Palmland Drive is our access that leads us out to Congress Avenue. I've reduced the presentation down, not to reiterate what was discussed last time, but I can, it's actually part of, I have it at the end of this, if we need to go into those details, but recognizing your time, have not. So what we're requesting here, just in summary, is our request is to annex this five-point-one-seven-acre parcel into the city of Boynton Beach, it's surrounded by the city of Boynton Beach on three sides, the north, the east, the south, and on the west side is the Village of Gulf. With annexation, your comprehensive plan requires that a land use designation be applied to the property and zoning, the land use designation that we're asking for is LDR, Low Density Residential, which is the lowest category that you have in your comprehensive plan that allows between zero and seven and a half units per acre. The zoning we're requesting is a PUD, Planned Unit Development, and that allows for some flexibility in design, but it also provides the city the ability to have some additional input and say on the development, which through your conditions of approval and through the staff review up to this point, there's been quite a bit of that. Our original application was submitted for twenty-six zero lot line homes, and this evening, and then since that first reading, we were asked to kind of go back and look at, look at some things, and we've modified that, we're down to twenty-five lots, we've actually reduced it by one lot in our design, which I'll go through. The primary comments that, or in our last presentation, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, there were commitments made that we're continuing to commit to traffic calming, adding some traffic calming through the Serrano development, which is our only access into the property. We're still willing to work with Serrano on the signage of being able to replace their sign and add a sign for us. All of this, of course, is through the permitting and the rules and regulations here in the city. In addition to that is a fence along their south property line, which what we're talking about there is a column and a rail-type fence, which we'll continue to work with them on that design. We are at sixty-six percent of our maximum density, I had mentioned that the land use designation allows up to seven and a half units an acre, which would allow us to do thirty-eight units there, which is more of a townhouse-type product. So we are two-thirds of that with the development that we're proposing here tonight, and that's thus the single-family versus townhomes there in my last bullet. The concerns in our last presentation, the main concerns, there were many that were discussed at the last hearing, but those primarily consisted of density, the number of lots, the traffic, the cabana and pool location, and the drainage for the project, and I'll go through the changes that we made to address those. The plan that's on the slide is the original plan that we submitted, with the twenty-six homes, has the buffers around the perimeter, which, as I indicated last time, are enhanced both in width and in the landscape material that's in it, the forty-foot access road down the middle, zero lot lines on each side, the drainage area on the east side of the property, and then we had shown a cabana and pool area in the northwest corner. On this slide, just for orientation, I should have mentioned, the north is to the right, the right-hand part of the slide. So, as we, as we worked through some of the criteria, there were things with the drainage, there are also the comments that were made about the cabana and the pool, where we took some of the conditions of approval, which typically happen after these hearings, and we've plugged it in. We've increased the drainage area, you can see the darker green that does kind of a reverse L shape that goes along the eastern side, and then along the northern side, to accommodate the conditions of approval for the additional drainage. And then what we've also done, the other comment that seemed to be touched on by the residents, whether the location of the pool, the noise and activity there, so we've eliminated that. We've moved two lots to the western side of the road, that, which is where the cabana and pool were, and eliminated one on the eastern side, which was, as we worked with your staff on accommodating that, the little, it's a little different shade of green, is an open space park track that will initially be improved with some barbecue grills, benches, gazebo-type of thing, we don't have the exact design of that yet, but then the homeowners, once they're in there, could make other improvements to it as they see fit in the future. The turnaround is virtually the same, it's just kind of a mirror image, it's still the K-type turnaround. Commissioner Romulus, I tried to flip it, and through our discussions with staff, they said, let's just leave it the way it is, it does work through Public Works and through FIRE, they've tested that, and so we still have the K-type turnaround. There are three parking spaces there on the end for guests, plus there's guest parking spaces for each of the homes themselves. If I had hit the button, then the highlight would have come up to show where the open space track is, which is essentially the size of a lot, which is forty-five by one-fifteen. The pink arrow there is showing the width of the new drainage area there, which is, it's about eighty feet across that. This slide is actually going back to the original plan and the separation that we had from neighbors on all the sides, and then when you plug in the new plan, we have the equal amount of separation on the west, on the, on the east, on the south, and on the north, it's actually more separation between the homes with the new drainage area on the eastern side of the road, and the lot that's on the northwestern side of the road. So there's actually additional separation there than our prior plan. This is the cross-section that we showed last time for the line of sight, we're maintaining the berm that I talked about and the drainage area that's on that side, there's a swale on the backside of the berm. One of the things that I'll correct, something that I mentioned last time, about the finished floor elevations, our finished floor elevations, there's some survey acronyms that I got clarified on afterwards, where our finished floor is actually about a foot and a half to two feet higher than it is on Silver Lake, but all of that has been factored into the revised drainage that we've done, we've sat down with Mr. Groff and Gary, and have gone through those, I believe I can say that they're comfortable with the design the way we have it. In the pink oval that's to the bottom right is still showing the berm along the eastern side of the property, we still have a swale on that side that will collect the backside of the berm, and for those lots of Silver Lake that are slowly trickling onto ours, that will help relieve that drainage situation there. The drainage area itself is actually about six inches deeper than what we proposed, and all of that is to accommodate this hundred-year flood condition that was part of the requirements that, it's really advancing us going to this level into the process, rather than through Mayor, I believe it was you who said, can you give me a timeline? We've been working on this project, actually, we started before the June date there, to get to a point of having some plans and discussions before we started with our pre-app with the city, the rest of the dates, I'm not gonna go through all those by any means, but you can see that there's considerable time and thought that goes through this, not only on our part, but by your staff. There's, I still claim and go around the county touting the city staff as the best in the county, and I do work in many jurisdictions, they're great to work with, they're accommodating, they hold to the rules, they hold us to the rules, and they've done it here, and we've been able to work this through, to get to that bottom date of today, which is the second reading and the final reading for the site plan. So as far as the concerns go, the density, I'll go through these quickly, I mentioned before, we're allowed thirty-eight lots, or thirty-eight units on the property, we've reduced it from twenty-six to twenty-five, so the density is actually very consistent with Serrano, yes, it is a higher density with Silver Lake and the Village of Gulf, but with our access coming through Serrano, we feel that's a consistent situation there. The traffic, as part of this application, we've had to provide a traffic study that's reviewed by the county traffic engineering department, they've approved that, I believe, Mayor, you checked yourself, as far as the timing of the signal at Congress is not adversely affected by the community, and then the traffic calming, which is what we've committed to do as the access road through Serrano. The cabana and the pool area was a concern, it was gonna be a gathering place, it was gonna be noisy, and so we've eliminated that, we've created a new open space area that's actually farther away from the adjacent residents, and then in addition to that, your codes require the park and rec fee of eight hundred and seventy-five dollars per lot, so there's nearly twenty-two thousand dollars that is paid into the city's fund as part of this development that goes into the parks and rec. The drainage I've touched on, we've made those modifications, we've expanded the area, we've gone through the calculations with your staff to come up with the design that's before you tonight, and then all of that will still have to go through the permitting process with the city, with Lakewood Drainage District and the South Florida Water Management District, before it gets constructed. So, in closing here, we're asking you tonight to approve the annexation, the land use zoning in our site plan for the twenty-five lots, and happy to say that we have staff recommendation of approval, and the conditions that are there are acceptable to us. We're here, I'm here, our team is here for any further questions you might have.
Thank you. Board, do you want to open it up to public comments, and then have Bradley speak about any of the public comments before we ask our own? Commissioner Romulus?
I have a real quick question, because I believe this was a concern that was addressed by one of the residents, you speak about traffic calming, can you just elaborate a little bit more on what you mean by that, because I know that one of the residents mentioned that they don't want speed bumps, so what are we doing in terms of traffic calming?
There are different methods, speed bumps are a method, but not always the answer, so there's ways, you can actually do inserts of either stamped asphalt or actual paver blocks into the roadway that give you that rumble as you drive over it, that's a method, which is probably something that we would head down towards. There's other methods which I don't think would be acceptable, where you see them up in West Palm, where they almost put landscape islands on the sides and closed down the road even tighter, I think there's concerns about the width of the road already, so we didn't want to go there, but it's most likely going to be a method of changing the pavement to kind of break it up and give you that sensation to calm down the, and, you know, signage is probably something that we could add into there too, to, you know, to try to add to that slowing of the traffic.
And another concern that was raised by a resident was in regards to construction and having, not having access, it was a Serrano resident, I believe, not having access to their driveway, is that something that we can clarify, and make sure that residents know that they will have access to their driveway as you guys make?
Absolutely. The construction traffic, unfortunately, we have one way in and one way out of this property, so it's gonna have to go through there, and as the construction continues through the project, we're gonna have to be cognizant of our neighbors and clean up behind ourselves, definitely.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna open up to public comments regarding this, if you have not sworn in, please let the attorney know so that he can swear you in, because this is quasi-judicial and we have the due process, you do have the ability to speak as much, I'm going to let you know when you hit eight minutes, to ask you to wrap it up in the next two minutes, so that we can have the next speaker speak, if you have more to speak after that, we will put you at the end of the line and allow other people to speak, so that everyone has a chance to voice their concerns, comments, and questions. So if everyone could line up to the left side of the room and behind the podium. However, if you wanted, don't want to stand up the whole time, just make sure that when there's only one person left speaking, that you get up behind them. Yep?
How y'all doing? My name is Darren Simmons, I live in Serrano at forty, Country Lake Circle, I'm also the president of the HOA. Thank you for your time, it's nice to meet y'all, good to see you again, Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm one of the original owners, and we've been there fourteen years, can't believe it's going that, it's been that long, but over the fourteen years, you know, originally we're talking about the twenty-five-year flood, I think I've seen three of those in past fourteen years. I've seen it where the lake between us and Cross Point has come up to our wall, and then some, but it also connected with the canal, you couldn't tell where, it runs along Palmland, you couldn't tell where the lake ended and the canal began, and then it went, proceeded over the road. So flooding is a concern, our lake, because of that, our lake has come up to alarming levels, and more importantly, the lake on the Bailey property that they're proposing... And more importantly, the lake on the Bailey property that they're proposing, that was put there to relieve the surrounding homeowners, and it's worked. I've seen that thing grow and it's headed toward us and Silver Lake, but overall, it did its job. So I'm worried that when you start replacing that area and you start putting homes in there, the water's got to go somewhere. I'm just kind of worried about that. The other thing I want to mention is parking. Now, I know they tried to sell you on the fact that there's two-car garages and you've got your driveway, probably put a couple more cars. Well, that works on paper, but in real life, we use our garages as our basements, we store stuff, and parking's a problem. We did have an incident where paramedics couldn't get through because there was too much parking on the street. They were on either side and it couldn't get through because the roads were narrow. So they had to kind of reroute. But anyway, we corrected that because we have, when you come into our community, we have nice green space, we've got the nice lake where there's no homes on it, and that's where we ask the guests to park, and our community is along there, so it doesn't hinder any of the homeowners getting in and out of their driveways, and it also allows cars to get through and emergency vehicles if needed. What I'm afraid of, because we've lived it for 14 years, is when you've got that many homes back-to-back-to-back on either side, there's really not a whole lot of relief. And you're talking a couple, three parking spots there. Somebody has a party, forget about it. So there's going to be an issue with the parking. I know that for a fact because we live it. Out of 47 homes in Serrano, five partner cars in garages. The rest of them are used for storage. So right now, we have three vacant homes, we've got 95 cars as residents in our community, so we'll be well over 100 cars when those three homes take residence. I guess my proposal here is, we know that something's going to be done on the property. It's too valuable to the city, I get it. I do worry about the things that I've mentioned here. I think we need to come to a compromise where none of us are getting what we want, not everything that we want. So we need to make sure it works for everybody, because there's a lot of residents that live there and are affected. So whatever you guys agree upon, you're leaving us with it to live with. So be careful in what you do, think about it, and I think really, I would like to see more homes reduced on that property, because I just think there's too many. There needs to be green space to relieve some of the parking issues that are going to occur. All right, so, and lastly, we started talking with Mark and his crew about some things that maybe we could beautify Serrano because it would partner with them to help them. Those kind of fizzled out and they've basically been nonexistent. So I'm not sure where their mindset is on things right now. I know they're talking about traffic calming and signs and all. We don't want our neighborhood, we've got to be careful because we don't want our neighborhood riddled with a bunch of signs. So it's still an issue that we have to work through. I think that if you guys can help with the fact that we've got, our road, it's our private road that they're using, how are they going to help pay for any repairs and such? For us to go, we're not going to work it out. Y'all are going to have to be the middle people here and try to get some sort of, something worked out that's going to be beneficial for everyone. So with that, I do appreciate your time.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Andrew Cavallotto, and my first time meeting everybody here, I was in the meeting, the last meeting, but I live at 30 Country Lake Circle, I'm a resident of Serrano. I'm just going to read you a statement and maybe talk a little bit about some of, you might have some questions or elaborate a little bit, maybe a little overlap with Darren. So a little history, we already know that during Serrano's development, at which time Bailey and his wife granted an easement through Serrano to access their single-family home. By the way, nowhere does it, we actually have, there's actually an agreement, and I'll actually send out copies to you, pass out copies. It doesn't say that the easement was transferable, and the easement was granted collectively to Daryl B. Bailey, Sr. and Cecilia Bailey. It is not attached to the actual parcel of land, it was an easement granted to them specifically. The Baileys maintained their parcel as a single family. The Baileys worked out a deal that they'd not be part of the Serrano Homeowners Association and that one lot actually they reserved for their daughter. The Baileys were still part of our community but worked out this written agreement with Serrano developer and the community. The bargain for exchange was for this easement as use of a single-family home on the parcel in question. Now the parcel's being, well, we know it's sold, to develop the proposed 26, now 25 homes, in which in itself changes dynamics of the use of Serrano's private road. One other note to mention that, we also have parcels that are 7,000 to over 8,000 feet. I have one of them. Not just the smaller lot dimensions used by the developer in calculating the space. The developer has also indicated that they have conducted studies favorable to their position. They indicate that their development and the increase in flow will have no consequence of any kind to Serrano or the surrounding areas and communities. The drainage assumptions in their current plan are the ones that may be altered if they have to build up, include building up the area to create higher ground to build on, can have a negative impact on drainage and saturation to the surrounding areas. I'd like to elaborate afterward a little bit about that. It was mentioned by the developer that the pond in back on Bailey's property was man-made and shallow. The pond indeed is actually a natural occurrence that existed on the property and which soft, sinkable mud is in the basin. The pond is quite deep, and I don't think they had the information when they discussed that. Accordingly, we'd like to know what the developer's risk contingency is in the event in the future there are negative impacts to the area as a result of drainage problems. In addition, if the city of Boynton Beach does approve the project, then the city should be also responsible for the aftermath effects and not leave Serrano holding the bag or the other communities that we have something, nothing to do with. Based on the foregoing, the only prudent thing for the commission to do in this case is in order to protect the landowners of the community as a whole, the surrounding developments, and the city themselves of Boynton Beach, to conduct their own independent study before making a decision of this magnitude so that you, the commission, can make an informed decision based on unbiased information. Currently, the road in question is a private road maintained by Serrano. The city does nothing to maintain the roads or the streetlights and considers these roads private. The advisory board rejected this project, and we ask that the commission follow the advisory board's recommendations. They must have been privy to something which caused them to rule that way. However, if the commission is inclined to grant the developer's request, we request that you at least consider adding following recommendations. To address the water concerns, the new development is going to build up, if they want to build it up and elevate the properties that they're building on, raising above that development, which can cause drainage issues, as I did mention, which can compromise the surrounding areas that will receive the drainage, someone must be held responsible. Have new developer beautify the areas surrounding the neighborhood since the new development has no green space as some corporate social responsibility, palm land, canal maybe, and commitment to the community. This could be an addition of trees, plants to offset the carbon footprint of the buildings and give an additional area for the wildlife being disrupted. Many species of birds, eagles, hawks, egrets, ospreys, cranes, turtles, tortoise, snakes, frogs, ducks, fish, skinks, lizards, foxes, bees, insects, even American alligator around that property. The filling of the pond disrupts the ecosystem by destroying grass, plants, and trees that exist already on the property. This area initially, when I looked at the zoning last night for West Palm Beach, it originally was zoned for agricultural residential AR, and I do have actually some maps that I actually tried to print out. It looks like actually the road from Village of Golf, there was a road that ran into, these must be old maps, but Village of Golf had a road that, see the north part by Silver Lake in between Village of Golf ran onto that actual Bailey's property. So before Bailey built on it, it might have been part of the golf community or part of the area that was part of the golf, I'm not sure, but something to consider. So I'd also like to discuss, the palm land area is lined with royal palms that were in the blueprints of Serrano's developer, which is actually on the Lakewood Water District land. Due to the blueprints that were originally submitted by the developer for the city's approval, we have been forced by the retired forester, we were supposed to maintain the grass, irrigation, and royal palms at our expense. It has been very costly to our community and has a negative impact to the surrounding community and no longer cost-effective for our community to maintain this. There is no contract stating we are to maintain this area and ask that either the city of Boynton or Lakewood Water District Water Management take over this area. Requiring that the city of Boynton Beach repair the roads leading to the community, Bob Long had mentioned three weeks ago about that whole palm land being all ripped up, that would be something to have addressed. The speed bumps or the slowing down of the traffic, also requiring the city of Boynton Beach to maintain the road and streetlights in Serrano that the new development will be using. Also possibly having development, maybe a sub-development be part of our HOA. Have the new development contribute to the maintenance of the roads if no solution can be reached with the city of Boynton Beach taking over the responsibility. Ensure proposed landscaping to not have the oaks near any of Serrano's property as they need 15-plus feet for roots. Unfortunately, the town approved the land, this is long before you guys. Unfortunately, the town approved the landscaping specs in Serrano that included oaks in the community, and the roots caused major issues with irrigation, plumbing, sidewalks, foundation of homes, compromising the structure of pools, concrete slabs under the homes, some of which have already torn up patios. The town approved this and allowed the trees to be planted incorrectly to the recommendation specs to how they grow. Again, this was approved by the city and now we, the community of Serrano is suffering a negative financial impact and having to foot the bill. Helping with the wall issue, we are having, the Serrano developers put in a subpart wall that was approved by the city of Boynton Beach. When we state for the record, the city of Boynton Beach should have some shit responsibility and be held accountable. The retainment wall is now compromised and in extreme need to be corrected due to the erosion and rotting of the wall. The water from the irrigation pond behind Cross Point Elementary School, Jason Doerr probably fills up with water and has over time rot, the railroad ties, not, the railroad ties. We are sure that we can look to Mark Julian, possibly his connections, in helping with a cost-effective solution or with their expertise in providing knowledge and assistance as well as maybe scaling vendors that build relationships with.
Two-minute warning. Two-minute warning, then we're going to let someone else speak.
The residents of Serrano already feel slighted by the subpart wall and the matter of the oak tree, such that we are having retainment issues. It is going to cost our community considerable resources to correct something that the town should never have signed off on in the first place. We are asking you not put us in the same position again with possible decisions with this community that's going in. The community would like to work together with the developer. We can make this a win-win situation for all sides and not just a win-win for the developer, not just a win for the developer, with other residents of the community being short-changed. Residents of Serrano require the commission's assistance in achieving this by considering our position and demands. We ask that you please consider our position in making your final determination and/or by adding any stipulations by the city commission imposed onto the developer in order to have their proposals approved. We want a holistic solution. There's thousands of people surrounding the proposed development, and it'd be nice for everybody to be happy, and I think that would probably be beneficial for you guys as well. The drainage, the only reason about the drainage is that ponds, I could see fish, I live on that wall and I could see the fish, and I see the birds eating the fish, and I look straight down, there's water, and there's about 30 feet from that water line to that back wall. So that drainage could be a possible issue. We know you can't stop development, we know it's probably going to go through, but we just got to think a little bit more harder on how this is going to play out. So, thank you.
My name is Roger Saberson, I live at 2740 Southwest 23rd Cranbrook Drive. As I mentioned at the last meeting, my home directly abuts this project at the project's southeast corner. And I just have a few comments, and I just wanted to digress for a minute to talk about a couple of things that were just spoken about. One was about the oak trees and the wall. And we had, at the time Serrano was put in, a wall was constructed along our entire property line at our request and with the city's approval. And along that, there are two large live oaks that are planted back there, and we have had no problem with the live oaks whatsoever. The wall has been very beneficial, we appreciate very much having it there. It provides security, privacy, and it also assists with the drainage in helping deflect the rainfall when it comes in into their drainage system, which is the way it's supposed to flow. If it was only left to an area without a wall, just a regular backyard, that drainage would be going everywhere. Also, in terms of the lake, the existing lake on the property, I've talked about, well, when there was a hurricane, the lake filled up and so forth. I can tell you, I lived through Hurricane Francis and Jean on the property that I'm living in now, and the entire five-acre tract and the entire Serrano tract was a complete lake. There's no way that that existing lake retains sufficient to retain the drainage from a hurricane. It won't do it. We can only hope that the professionally-designed drainage system will do that. And I wanted to ask the developer's representative, Bradley Miller, just to come up for a second. I just want to confirm something with him.
No, I'm sorry, Roger, no. You have to ask the question to us, and he's in the audience listening, and when he has his second time to ask, he will come up.
Okay, I just wanted to be absolutely clear that the drainage area behind my property and the property along Silver Lake that was shown on the original plan submitted to the city, which is currently on file with the city, is not being reduced in any way by these new plans. It didn't look like it was being reduced with the plan he showed up there, I'd just like him to confirm that for the record. The other main question that I have is now with the revised drainage plans, does this project, will this project comply with the 100-year, three-day storm requirement that they construct the top of the berm to that? And as a corollary to that, where is the berm going to be constructed? My wife and I retained a private engineer to look at the plans that were originally filed, the engineering plans, and he had several comments. Two of the main comments were, number one, he thought that the condition that the staff came up with, what's 100-year, 3-day storm event, was excellent condition. The second is that to implement that, the berm really needs to be constructed around the entire property, because this property is landlocked property from a drainage standpoint. It has no outlet to any canal. The water has nowhere to go. Like, I was a little shocked to think that when they designed the original plans, they designed it to flood us. They designed it for a 25-year storm. And 25-year storms, storms that excess of that occur all the time in South Florida. So where would that drainage have gone? It would have gone on our property. Thank goodness that the staff came up with the condition they came up with. Also, as you know, we had asked for, and many of the residents asked for and wanted, a wall. The staff recommended initially that a six-foot CBS wall be constructed along the property We haven't heard much feedback on that that's positive, but that still would be what we'd like to see. But in any event, what's shown now around the perimeter is a fence, and it isn't clear from the drawings, it just says wood fence. And I talked to Bradley Miller today, and I said, "Well, Bradley, is the developer putting in a new wood fence around the perimeter?" He said, "No, that's just the existing fence, it should have labeled that way on the plans." And the existing fence, I think most of it was put up by Daryl Bailey, who owned this five-acre tract. We have an old dilapidated fence that he put up behind our property that's falling down, hasn't been maintained, and when he put it up, it wasn't in good condition to begin with. So that's what the developer plans on leaving there. But he said, "No, we're going to put along the Silver Lake side, we're going to put a chain-link fence." Nowhere is the chain-link fence shown on the plans, nor is it referred to in the conditions of approval. So if that's what's going to be there, then it should be in the conditions of approval, that's what they're going to construct. But again, back to the main question, one of the questions was about compliance with the 100-year storm requirement, the berm, and so forth. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Jack Donahue, and I live at 2551 Southwest Cranbrook. My name's Jack Donahue and I live at 2551 Southwest Cranbrook Drive.
Microphone a little bit better.
I'm sorry?
Into the microphone.
Can you hear me now? We've lived in Silver Lake since 1994 and we found evidence in the beginning when we moved there that there may have been some flooding. And when we moved there, that was a tree farm. And I know that that got flooded a lot. In sometime prior to 1997, Dural bought the property. He decided to build a house on it and he raised the property up two feet. When he did that, following that year, then the next year, in 1998, two storms, Georges and Mitch came and they flooded all of the properties on the west side of Silver Lake. Every single one of them. And there's 24. In 1999 came Irene. That was the storm of the century. 19 inches in Boynton Beach, three days. It not only flooded our house, but all of them. I actually have a movie which shows the destruction that it did. By, by Mr., by Dural Bailey's moving his property up two feet, it blocked all of the water coming from the Village of Golf. And that is an extreme problem. The golf course from the Village of, if you, if you look, if you look at it, there is a, an easement right next to South Country Road in, in, in Village of Golf. All of the water from their golf course came down to that easement. It's, and of course, water always finds the lowest part, point. It headed directly to Dr. Joseph LaViola's house. Seven, eight inches in his porch. Water was still flowing 12 hours after the, the rain stopped. And then, when it, when it, it went back to the easement or it kept down the eas, or the easement, headed for the, for the canal and on Golf Road. Everybody got flooded really bad. We had six inches of water in our house. And what Mr. Bailey did after that is he created a retention pond. That has taken the relief off of us. That retention pond is the most important thing going for all of us. And my fear is that that is going to be covered over. And that water will have no place to go except in our houses. And I'm, I'm really, I'm really afraid of this. I, I've had people from the Lake Worth Water Management District and the, the other, the other, the, the Water District, the Drainage District, tell me that we can handle our own water, but we cannot handle somebody else's. And that is exactly what's gonna happen. My neighbor and myself built a 48 inch berm around our two properties and created a drainage system done by professionals. This was, this cost a lot of money for us to protect ourselves and we've had no problem since that was done. But I'm afraid that if some, something is done with that pond, if that, if the water flowing into it can't, can't go there, then we're gonna get it. And I just hope that you can take this into consideration. If anybody wants to see the film, I've got it and I'm telling you, it will scare you. Thank you.
I'm Julia Davidow, 2314 Southwest 23rd Cranbrook Drive, and I am the president of the HOA of the Estates of Silver Lake. This is the third time I speak before you. This is the first time I'm speaking without my notes. Those of you who have heard me before know that we worked very hard since December to try and organize in our community. We have 168 homes, one vacant lot. That is for sale, by the way. But at any rate, our community came together in, in ad hoc sessions, we review the, we listened to one another, and it wasn't until February that I got to talk to anyone of any importance or would listen to me, or to listen to us. I did speak with our commissioner and he agreed that we had some concerns. I came to the city, I talked to you, well, not to you, our new elected commissioner is here, but I talked to, I talked to Mr. Breeze, I talked to your engineer, and I don't think we were heard at all. The only thing I think really happened was everything I said, Mr. Miller did a very beautiful way of showing how it could be fixed. But I'm not impressed and I don't feel like it's fixed and I don't feel like anyone is really listening to us, we of Silver Lake who have been there since 1980. Yes, we embrace development. Yes, we want to have beautiful homes. Yes, we want single family homes, but at what expense? How is this going to happen for us? We asked the developers to maybe leave the lake, make a cul-de-sac, build a wall. Everything we talked about has not been answered. The only thing that has been answered, and I'm not even sure after what Roger said it was, is the 100 year storm. The developers were able to show this great plan without ever even addressing what the city said in the first place was that it had to address the 100 years. And on top of that, there is no place to go. It's a little tiny sack that we now are allowing all of this, oh yes, it looks wonderful because look, you can put at least 37 homes in this spot. And now we're only gonna put 25. There shouldn't even be 10 over there. Maybe 20. But when you go to 25, what are the rest of us, chopped liver? And who are you representing? I have tried to be very calm, very, very cooperative, and I'm really very anxious now because this is the last hurrah. Can you please understand what is it that you have done for us? For all of us. You heard what Serrano, the pain Serrano has. You have heard my people of Silver Lake. I'm sure you'll hear what the Village of Golf is. Are we all invisible? Are we invisible to a development? I don't think we've been invisible to Boynton Beach. I think we're real citizens who have been here for a really long time and want the best for everyone. Yes, we want the property to be developed, but this is so quickly done. I hesitated to begin to say that when we first approached here, the Planning and Development Board unanimously really agreed with us. I don't necessarily wanna quote what was said there, but it was about fitting so many pounds of something into a bag of something and it just doesn't make it. And they all, I don't know, I guess you all have to read those reports, why bother to have a Planning and Development Board? Then, all of a sudden, the whole thing is postponed. We breathe. But only to come after the election. Why should it be postponed to the 19th of March? Tremendous celebration here. Congratulations, it was a wonderful night for all of you. For us, it was a nightmare. My people were out on federal highway and couldn't get in here. I had to plead with the policeman downstairs and he let me come up through here to be able to be in this auditorium with you. Because that's the night that the developer asked to have the hearing. Oh my, a week right after the election? Why not tonight? And this is just two weeks, two weeks after that hearing, hearing number one. So, I'm feeling nobody is really listening to us at Silver Lake. And the last time I closed with, "You are our representatives." Please, listen to us. We are good citizens. We want development, but we want consensus. We're not unhappy if, if Julian, Mark Julian and Bradley Miller make money, we're not unhappy if the city makes money. Just protect us because all the money in the world can't save us. Only you can. Thank you.
Christine Thrower, Village Manager of the Village of Golf. Mayor Lynch couldn't be here tonight, but he did ask me to express that our sentiments have not changed. Two weeks ago, we felt that the village, village stands opposed to the plan as presented then. I didn't see the plan until tonight and what I've seen tonight does little to alleviate our concerns about the density and the noise and in fact puts two more houses up against the village's fence line. We believe this development will be detrimental to all of the surrounding residents, their property values, and their quality of life. Should this site plan be approved? As the manager, I will be recommending to the Village Council that we build a 15 to 20 foot wall for the protection of the village residents and their quality of life. Thank you.
Hi, Emory, Mia Lonergan. I guess there's some confusion as to who I am in various emails and telephone calls this past week. I'm not sure what you guys are gonna vote on tonight. We had a set of plans and a request to vote on, an annexation and a site plan that was given to the city. We all looked at it a couple of weeks ago. This isn't a rush, I mean, the developer asked to postpone the first reading from February 5th to March 19th. Why the rush now? Why don't they go ahead and pull this off the table tonight like gentlemen, professional people? Come back with their revised submission, publish it, where, I don't know, the city attorney just took off. That's a joke. He's supposed to be, we pay him to protect us. We pay that man to protect all of our legal rights and he's left. So I, I'm calling that on record. I would like to be known if this is a quasi-hearing and if so, what's the publication requirements for site and annexation development document that is put to vote by city commission? I don't believe this has been published in accordance with Chapter 171 of the Florida statute, nor is it in accordance with the city charter. So I am asking the city commission and mayor to say, "Hey developer, owner, you guys asked to be, have this tabled from February 5th to March 19th. Why don't we table it once again? And let's go back and look at the development and, you know, bring something that actually meets code for the city engineers and the plan reviewers and developers, development departments to look at. Let them make their formal recommendations to the city commission and the mayor in accordance with city charter and Florida statute and then let's put it, publicize it, put it on the table and we all come and look at it." I think if the developer scrubbed this development idea a little bit more, we could meet consensus. Right now, we have a developer at the last minute sliding into agenda notes and meeting a site plan, look ahead idea that is here for everyone to vote on that nobody's seen except you guys. Who saw this? Did, did anybody see this in the public? I don't think so. I haven't seen it published anywhere. Now, we know the pool amenity had to go. That didn't meet code, that pool had to be 50 feet for the nearest residents. We knew that had to go, so thank you for nothing. That's a gimme. We know this site drainage wasn't on par. Oh, they're gonna give you four more inches of what? How? What's the volume? I don't trust anybody now. You guys reviewed this, the city engineer admitted last meeting that it didn't meet code. The developer, the engineer, we don't have a survey, it's an unplanted, unplanted piece of property. The street conveyance doesn't go through automatically from single family home to Serrano's development for their use of 26 new homes. Alright, so now they're at 25. Now we've got cars parking, shining lights into the homes behind them. I'm gonna have to worry about a site plan. We've got a site plan elevation admitted tonight that it's not based on any fact, right? I know my home elevation's like a finished floor 11 plus, maybe 12 at the most, and they're gonna be at 15.5. That's more than two feet. With a 30 foot wall of houses all lined up, I don't see an elevation plan that provides for this review that's accurate and real. I had surgery this morning, I apologize. I've got my daughter I've gotta raise. So now I'm gonna get creepy people staring down into my backyard at this kind of an angle because on their site plan, the guy's six foot two, right? It's residential, please, okay? Looking, who needs this? Why, why do you wanna reduce my quality of life? Who are you to reduce my value of my home, my quality of life, the privacy that I enjoy as a citizen of a non-urban density area? You guys wanna build this downtown, provide some equal housing for teachers and policemen? Go for it. You're trying to put an urban housing community in the middle of a non-urban housed area. Serrano is like 4.8 at the most and they gave you guys a lift station, they gave you property to put a lift station in, okay? This property, this development gives us nothing. What's the, what's the rush? I say, let's use due diligence, let's use our heads here, let's table it. Nobody at the city can tell me if it's not any kind of staff recommendation, it just got put up here this, tonight. Who in the city was able to look at this? And are they the same people who looked at the one the last time that realized it wasn't a code? We can't trust the competencies of the same people. Where is the, where's the principal of the developer? Guy in charge of the city development? It's his team that's feeding you guys for voting a bunch of nonsense. Yes, you have indemnification. Yes, you guys are all protected from harm that would come to us. You wanna do a dry bed berm? Not a problem. Now we're gonna have a dyke, okay? It's gonna be a dyke because you don't have percolation test, right? You have no idea how deep this thing is, a private, private, there's gonna be no county or district overseeing the cleanliness, the maintenance, all of these are required for it to really work well. We get a couple of big storms, that dyke levy breaks and you have catastrophic flooding into our neighborhood and y'all go home. Hey, not a problem, I'm indemnified. I really didn't know, I'm not an engineer. Somebody's gotta know, give me a break. Why the rush tonight? Why the rush tonight? You've got revised plans, what are you guys voting on? Tell me. Nobody can tell me, you shouldn't even have put those up there. I told you earlier today, you weren't allowed to put those up there. Do you think I walk in a vacuum? Do you think I work in a vacuum? No, I have spent considerable time, energy, and my own money to investigate and find out what I'm gonna be talking about tonight. That's what I do. I do my due diligence because I'm not an attorney, but I hired one. I'm not an engineer, but I hired one. I'm not a geologist. I don't know what the perk test would be, nobody does because they don't have any soil borings or geological reports, but I know how to read one. I also know how to read plans and I also can read to the 12th grade education, although I have a higher educated, you know, degree in whatever, it doesn't matter. The codes, like a 12th grader could read the code and it tells you what you gotta do. Who's providing any of you guys your due diligence? Who's providing you guys with something you're gonna vote on that you really can't even vote on? Who, I wanna know, who's telling you this is okay to vote on tonight?
Everything that's been presented and the city-
Everything that's been presented, and the city lawyer can confirm this, is in accordance with every rule and regulation before the city and state of Florida.
So that's all been published? That's all been publicized? That plan, all that? When?
In accordance with the laws that govern...
You're so wrong. You are so wrong, and I beg, I beg you, do not follow the engineering require, the staff recommendations of last week, too.
Emory, you have two minutes.
That was all, oh, it's okay, it wasn't a code. This wasn't publicized. You've revised the plans, and now you need to table it. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. We've all been sworn in. Chapter 171 states differently. I beg you, city commissioners, don't cost us more money. You want to jeopardize everything that we have built up in our communities surrounding this little five-acre packet to put in a high-density neighborhood. Serrano could have built 74 homes in their neighborhood. They did it. They gave the city a lift station. They put in a lake, they put in drainage, they built to code, they're maintaining their own streets and roads. You don't even know if they've got an easement or a way to get in and out of this property that's legal, and you want to vote on it. Serrano is telling you they don't. They hired an attorney to double-check it. So I don't know. How do you guys come up with this stuff? And why? Why are you forcing 25 units that are not even close to any, Serrano's less than that? Make it 20. Don't put the headlights parked in. Have they enhanced the landscaping? What site are they going to put it on? Nobody knows. It's like a whole wish list. And all you want to do is vote on this, and then it's going to go back to the same plan reviewers and the city officials that are going to revise it, and then it's a secret because nobody's going to know what the permit's going to look like until it's done. And that's what we don't want. We don't want the secrets. And I'll tell you what, we have the right as citizens, they're not citizens, this is a what-if. We are the citizens. You're supposed to represent us, not the developer. And I, and I am begging you to reconsider this vote, even though the city attorney states that you're able to do it. I beg to differ. I strongly beg to differ that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know something? My name's Herb Suss. Live in the city. I'm a citizen, District 1, along with these people in District 1. I missed the first reading. Health problems, I couldn't make it. I find out about what's going on now. I hear my neighbors, I live in Quail Run. These people are indirectly and directly my neighbors. And I'm going to tell you something, I am aghast at what the hell is going on here. You people were elected by a lot of these people, including me. I voted for everybody up there. I support everybody up there. You know it, and I know it. I'm an activist, you know it and I know it, and I tell it the way it is, and tonight I'm going to tell it the way it is. And I'm not looking to make points with anybody up there. But I live in District 1, and I expect my District 1 representative to listen. I respect him, and I respect you. That's why I voted for you. Making very, very small contribution, that's all I could afford. Forget about that. More important, listen to these people. I implore you, their quality of life, and in a way, as, I don't know any of these people, I really don't, but directly and indirectly, they're my neighbors. And I hope that in some future date, if my neighborhood of Quail Run is affected, that they come up and speak and save us. I am asking you to table this thing, give it more thought, and you know how you can eliminate this whole problem? Don't annex that property. Don't annex that property. It solves the problem. And I know you're not, and I, and I, and I know you're not going to do that. And I know down deep that you want development and you're going to approve it, but at least modify. Too many homes, this whole area, even where I live, too many homes, saturation. And I don't care what this thing shows as far as Congress. Gulf Road is going to be inundated, too. Gulf Road, I don't care, hey, listen, traffic is going to be traffic, and Congress is going to have a problem. My representative, District 1, I expect you to listen. Table the damn motion. Don't annex this property at all. That'll solve everything. But listen to my neighbors. Listen to my neighbors and give it some thought. And really, and you're a new elected commissioner of District 4. Listen to the people. Have a heart. Every one of you up there have a heart. But if you have a heart, listen to these people. I implore you. I am outraged. I am outraged. And if I was at, two weeks ago, I would have probably flipped. And I'm flipping tonight, and I'm very angry. But like I said, I don't know these people. But I hope that eventually they'll come and support me when I need it. And I expect my representative of District 1, these are District 1 people, Gulf Road is a Gulf, the Village of Gulf, why should they build a high-density, big wall? I mean, I don't understand what the heck is going on. Please listen to these people. People of emotion, don't annex the people.
Yeah, if, yes, please continue.
At least, bottom line, we were hearing, is this on? Okay. Bottom line was, we were hearing, I don't understand, like, we hear all these problems about downsizing. Well, why don't we, why doesn't the project mimic, like a miniature Serrano? Put the green space in, put the drain basin in the middle, alleviates a lot of the headaches. Sorry, can't be 25 homes, but that solves the problem than anything. I mean, I know you guys want to annex the property, but there's a reason they're going to you to have this property annexed, which most likely would not have been approved by Palm Beach County rural zone. I don't know that. I would have just, you know. And the other thing, you have to, you have to look at, you just have to look at, you don't know what's going to happen until after we get the rains. My house floods, and I have the swale, the swale that's required by city, and my neighbor and me, we both, the water goes on both our properties. And we have that little drainage swale, and we had an incident last week, where actually that whole back wall just washed out on his side. So what are we going to wait for? Something to happen and then say, okay, now what are we going to do? Want to go back? It's no doubt, we're going to put it in. It's not fighting the thought of putting it in, but maybe we really have to look at the 25 homes. You know, to be lowered, you know? Just make it look like, look like a miniature Serrano. Do what Serrano did. And I think then you'd have like a lot less problems, and you'd probably get confidence back to a lot of these people here today. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else would like to have final comments before we close public audience? We have someone behind you. As much as they want, because it's quasi-judicial. So this is the...
Over and out?
No, no, no. If they use up their 10 minutes, and this is someone new, so please.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Stefan. I'm a resident of the Estates at Silver Lake 2670 Cranbrook Drive. Sadly, I was turned away from the last meeting. There was a police officer that greeted those coming in. I was not the only one. Told that it was standing room only, there was no more parking. And will we please be kind enough to turn around, which I did. But I do not see this as a fair opportunity for representation from the people of Boynton Beach. I take offense to you scheduling the inauguration and discussing this on the same evening. Furthermore, if I just look at you as an entity, as these people are pouring their hearts out, we do not even receive the respect of eye contact. This is a sad state of affairs. Is Boynton Beach all about quantity, greed, development? I have not heard anything about the quality. I hope I give you pause to reconsider the course that you're taking. You are impacting so many people's lives, and you don't even honor us with eye contact. So maybe it is true, it's all about the money.
I didn't use my eight minutes, I just have a brief comment. The comment about putting the lake in the middle and all that, I think the drainage system that they're proposing is superior to what's there now. It's a professionally designed drainage plan reviewed by the city engineer, the assistant city manager. It's going to have the capacity to do what it should do from a development standpoint and a retaining standpoint, so it's superior to what's there now. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Herb.
Something very important.
All right, please make it brief.
It'll be brief. In Quail Run, when we had a big hurricane in the late 90s, we have a canal, we have the big lake, and my community was flooded, flooded. So, and, and we don't have, we don't have this, but we were flooded. And, and I know what water could do. It cost me a fortune, and as a retired person, I couldn't, I had to borrow money. And this was from the overflow of the canals, the overflow of the lake, and the constant rain. It cost me a fortune. And I know what flooding is. I had mold, I had to pay for that, and these people don't even know what's going to happen with mold and dangers. And what about mosquitoes with, with health problems that these people are going to be affected? Of course, my community did affect a lot of people health-wise. Take that under consideration, and let that be on your conscience, too, that if anybody... Forget about it.
All right. Jack, you know, the situation is, is that if you used your 10 minutes, then you'd come back, but, you know, otherwise people can keep on coming back, so I'd like you to make it brief.
I just had a couple of comments.
Okay.
We know about the mold. We know about the things that happen with floods.
Okay.
And believe me, it impacts people badly.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close public audience and ask the applicant to please come up to the podium. And respond to any of the audience questions if you'd like to. Otherwise, we can move on to Commissioner and Board questions.
Thank you again, Bradley Miller, for the applicant. Lot of emotion here tonight. I'm going to start out by, by saying that this application has followed the rules and regulations, so the city of Boynton Beach has gone through the review process as any other project through the city of Boynton Beach has done. Your staff has reviewed it from top to bottom, to the point of, of working with them with modified plans, which typically comes afterwards. In a way, I feel like, you know, we're getting kicked around here because we're showing you the plan that it's going to be to comply with the conditions of approval, if I could get a little respect. Thank you.
She was, she had surgery.
To comply with the conditions of approval, and Commissioner Katz wanted us to go through that exercise before we came back here tonight. We did that. We met with your staff. If I was, if I was your staff, I would be speaking up, saying, they're your professionals. They're the ones that are looking out for the five of you. They're, they're analyzing what, what we had. There was, there's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of opinion, there are a lot of comments here tonight. I didn't hear anything of any competent substantial evidence that was presented that's going to be contrary to what we've submitted through...
Excuse me. Thank you for sitting down. No. We were letting the applicant speak. He was quiet when everyone else was speaking.
Thank you. So on some of the, the comments, Mr. Saberson had a question about the drainage area. It is the exact same width as our original plan, that didn't change. The area that did change is up on the northern end where we wrapped it around the corner. As far as the, I think it was, he also asked about the chain link fence. We will agree to the, a condition of approval to put in that chain link fence. We committed to that at the last hearing, we're staying consistent with that. I also understand that staff has, we're presenting this alternative design, I guess, if you will, to you. Staff has additional conditions that I haven't even seen. I was just told about them. So, so everybody's, you know, looking at us. But, but we're looking at it. It's been studied, it's been evaluated, and so I guess if you'd like to have staff come up and address those, I think those, those are really the, the comments I need to address. The drainage situation, Silver Lake is designed for a 25-year storm. Serrano is designed for a 25-year storm. Village of Gulf, my understanding is that it's old and preceded those requirements through the South Florida Water Management District. We're designing for a 100-year storm. It's that much more. The design is exactly as Mr. Pike testified at the last hearing, is it, it ends up being that bermed concept all the way around, and it's, it's held there on-site for a 100-year storm. Follows those regulations. We've sat down with your engineers to go through it. I'll let them speak as to whether they're comfortable or not. I don't think we would be here tonight if they're not. If there's anything else that I haven't addressed that you'd like me to, I'd be happy to.
All right. Yes, I'd like to just do it in a row. Vice Mayor Katz, would you like to begin?
Yeah. So first, and I'll try to address as many things as possible because there were a lot of comments, and in particular, the comments that were, that were simply not true, and I'll request again city staff or the city attorney to confirm the statement I just made. So first and foremost, with regards to the laws that govern the process of permitting and approving the annexation, the land used to zoning, the site plan, I'll ask the city attorney, has everything presented tonight been in accordance with all state and local regulations, or is the presentation of this plan, as we just saw it, a violation of any such laws?
Commissioner, this matter is before the city commission tonight, having complied with all notice requirements under both city and state law.
So, again, the reason I am emphasizing that is because statements to the contrary were, were simply false. Everything that's been presented here is in exact accordance with the rules that we follow for every ordinance. With regards to the, the timing of all this, the reason it was delayed is because in response to a meeting with representation from Silver Lake, there was a request to demand more input in the process, which necessitated, and I went about securing a delay in the process to allow these additional inputs and meetings. So as far as why there was a delay, it's because it was requested to allow more input and was granted by the developer. As to why this hearing is precisely two weeks after the previous one, is because that's how every single ordinance is heard two times. It's presented, two weeks later, it comes back and it's approved. So as far as the timing concerns go, there, there's nothing out of the ordinary, and in fact, the reason for the delay was at the request of adjacent property owners. When I spoke to the president and members of the board in Silver Lake, I got the impression coming out of that, that while I was completely honest in my position today is exactly as it was at that meeting, then I might not have been well-received in my statements, but I would rather be honest than lie and deceive people to making them think something is possible that might not be possible because legally, there are rights associated with the property. So my position at the... So my position at the time that I took the meeting in Silver Lake was, if this property is not annexed, the current county regulations would permit it to put the exact amount of units. If we annex it, they would be entitled to the same exact plan. They're in fact entitled to more, but they're not putting that. And the issues that I was concerned with, that I felt were objective issues, not personal preference or, or desire, were the drainage, which to me remains the single biggest issue on this project, because that is not subjective, that is quantifiable. We have standards that have to be adhered to. And if, if we're being asked to disregard the standards for drainage because individuals who are not experts in drainage don't think those standards are good, then that means that every single project in the city could never be approved because we're ignoring engineering standards and drainage standards. The drainage is the number one issue. The second issue that I talked about at the time of my meeting with Silver Lake was the clubhouse and the location of the clubhouse. And I made clear at that time that I would certainly fight to move that clubhouse towards the middle of the property, so that it was not adjacent to any Silver Lake properties. The result of that request is that they no longer are asking for a clubhouse to be built. So I guess, to me, that solves the clubhouse problem because it doesn't exist anymore. The third issue that I thought we had some traction, that we could possibly do something on, was the wall on the eastern portion of the property. The request for a concrete block wall, in, in speaking to every person in the city whose area of expertise this is, was if you build this wall, it might seem like it provides more security, but it will cause drainage issues. Right now, the plan before you allows for water to drain from Silver Lake properties into that divot, so that it doesn't flood your property. By putting an impervious wall, which isn't required, as I've come to understand, it would force the water on your side to stay on your side, but the property owner as presenting this project is allowing water to run onto its property. So they're going above and beyond the drainage requirements in the code to ensure that it will not flood your property. I can't speak to hypothetical extreme scenarios, but that the standard that's set is the 100-year three-day storm, and that is what's applied to every property in the city. I hear the concerns. There are property rights associated with the land, if we annex it or if we don't annex it, which means that the quantity of houses, which again is a subjective, I heard a statement from one of the residents today, say, you know, put 20. I'm not sure what the difference between 20 and 25 houses is, but I suspect if this came in at 20, there would still be resistance. There was reference to Serrano being under capacity when they built. As presented to you, this project is only at 66% capacity. So I'd, to, to try to sum up what I can, when I went into this, I spoke earnestly about what I believe to be the honest potential to craft this project, respect the property rights of the property owner, and make sure that those things that could be changed, could be changed. And many of those changes have been woven into this project. The last thing I'll address, because it was made, it's my personal opinion that the reason why the P and D board rejected this project was because individuals deceived your property owners into thinking it could be legally stopped by just rejecting it, by saying, we will not annex them and refuse to hook up their utilities. We're not legally allowed to do that, by saying, if we don't annex them, the county will not allow them to do this. It's zoned for the number of units that are being requested. So with regards to the rejection by the Planning and Development Board, it's my opinion that individuals for ulterior motives voted it down, presented themselves as being some sort of savior, when they had no way of preventing it at a time when maybe making a positive impression in your community could have benefited certain individuals. That is my opinion, and I state that as fact, in my opinion. What's before you is below capacity. What's before you, if, if it were in any other part of the city, this is exactly what's been requested in any other part of the city. Everywhere else in the city where the density is allowed to be higher and projects have been approved at higher densities, they've demanded single-family detached units. People have cried for exactly what this is. I know that with regards to being the representative for District One and, and doing what the residents want, if the residents want us to disregard engineering standards, to disregard our zoning and our land use regulations, to deny property rights, they're codified by law, if people want us to violate the law, then we have a decision to make whether we are going to break our oath to uphold the laws, to appease the decision or the desire of certain residents. I intend to support this project because if it goes to the county, it will be supported, and they will get the same exact approval. I don't believe in, in dragging out the process. I also was firm in my stance that if we did not annex it, all of these changes that we've managed to negotiate in there that are in accordance with some of the requests of residents, we don't have any leverage anymore. It will never come before this commission ever again if we don't annex them, and when it goes to seven county commissioners, six of which don't represent the city of Boynton Beach in this area at all, I don't think that any of them are going to fight for these accommodations that we fought for. Your best chance at those changes was keeping it here, and that's why I supported annexation at the previous meeting. That's why I stated I supported annexation in meetings with residents throughout the past couple of months, and that's why I support it again today. We've made the changes that were requested to the best of our ability with respect to the rights of the property owner. So I'll, I'll stop rambling, but I apologize if there's a difference of opinion, but with regards to many statements said tonight about this being illegally presented, not abiding by ordinances and codes, this, that's factually incorrect. Just because someone says something in public doesn't mean it's a fact, and when you have facts that can refute that, you can't take their word when they're incorrect. Sometimes you're right, sometimes you're wrong. So with that, you know, again, I intend to approve this. It was delayed to accommodate more negotiation. That negotiation led to some of the changes that were desired in this project, and I certainly do think that it could be a lot worse, given the density is allowed to go up to seven-plus units per acre. So I hope that if this project is approved and when it's built, that many of the concerns that have been aired tonight will be assuaged by the fact that most of them are, are extremely unlikely, if not impossible, and everything is being done to protect the adjacent properties from flooding, which is the, the most pressing concern. So with that.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Commissioner McCray, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but I do have some comments.
You okay?
And I would just like to say, I remember when Village of Gulf was built, Silver Lakes and Serrano, and I'm in favor of annexation because I don't want you all to get that 7.5 per acre if the county comes in here. I'm only in favor of annexation.
All right. Commissioner Romulus.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do not want to reiterate all the things that Vice Mayor Katz just mentioned. What I will ask the applicant, in regards to the access easement, I know that there was a question about that. Do you have the information that clarifies that or that shows that there is proof for access easement into your development?
The, the access easement is on a plat. It's a plat book, 102, pages 147 and 148, that identifies the easement that leads to this property as being a private easement with access to this property.
Correct.
Recorded document in the Palm Beach County records.
Thank you. So that concern is alleviated? Thank you. And in regards to, I would like to just hear you repeat it again, because again, I believe that the main concern about residents, that residents have in the surrounding area, is that flooding and drainage, where are you, or to what standards are you building your development?
We're, we're building according to the conditions to 100-year, three-day storm event, which these modifications have adjusted for that, which, which means through this permitting process, the drainage on our property is not allowed to go beyond our property. It's held on site. Commissioner Katz is correct with the, the east side, where we're providing that swale is actually going above and beyond and taking some of the drainage that's coming off of Silver Lake onto our property and accommodating that as well.
Thank you. And then my last question is just in regards to the retention area that you create, that you created. Is that where the current pond, or at least the vicinity of that current pond that's there on the property now, is that kind of the general area of where it was, where it sits?
The current, the current pond is a little, it's more where the lots are than, than not. And our engineer was explaining that, that that pond doesn't meet any of the criteria for South Florida Water Management District to even be designed for drainage. Obviously, it's holding water, but the system that's, that's designed for this project and will continue to be designed through the rules and regulations of the city, Lake port Drainage District and South Florida Water Management District, is going to improve on the whole thing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So I as well will also be supporting this project as I supported it last meeting. According to our city attorney, we have followed all of the rules and regulations and timelines and accordancees of what we should be doing. And I would like to address and stress the fact that two weeks ago, when we had our swearing in ceremony, you know, the fact that we had police officers turning people away was not because we were trying to prevent individuals from engaging in the civic, in their civic duties by being here, it's only because we literally were at capacity and we could not let further people into this building. I, I believe perhaps the mistake that, that was made was that perhaps they should have mentioned that if you have an agenda item to come at a later time, because that would have allowed for the people who were in the swearing in ceremony to leave, and then that way, other individuals could have come in at a later time. So we, I guess, can do a better job of communicating next time to prevent situations like this. But again, I, we followed all of the rules and all of the ordinances and everything that we normally do, and all the statutes, Florida statutes, state statutes, of how we normally do all of our procedures and proceedings. So I would definitely make sure that in the future, we can again elaborate and make sure that people do not feel like their voices are being cut off or not heard because of a simultaneous event occurring. Again, that being said, I, I do feel that the applicant has gone above and beyond in showing their willingness to work with the surrounding neighbors in terms of the changes and the plans, in terms of making some adjustments that have been requested that are amenable and within reason. You also see the fact that again, the number of homes potentially that could have been built according to our zoning regulations here in Boynton Beach could have been 38. But the resident, the applicant, I mean, if we're talking, if we're trying to say it's all about the money, the applicant could have built 38 homes on this property but chose not to, simply because they wanted to build something that matches the surrounding area. Those are all things that I, I take into consideration. And to address one of the individuals who mentioned that, do we not care and are we not listening? We are listening, and I believe with the work of my fellow colleague up here, Vice Mayor Katz, taking time to meet several times with members in those communities, and also with the developer to kind of be the go-between, to make some of these changes and make some of these accommodations. If we didn't care, we wouldn't be doing these things. If we didn't care, we wouldn't be asking and demanding all of these requirements of the developer and of the applicant to make those changes. Our staff is highly qualified. As you can see earlier today, we're receiving awards for the work that we're doing here within the city and our utilities and other departments. So we trust the staff to have the, you know, the expertise that they are, when they give us a recommendation, they say, yes, we recommend approval with such and such conditions. We trust these approvals, and that trust and that faith in our staff is what we also follow through with when we make our decisions. So that being said, this is why again, I will be in support of this project this evening, and I am, I have the faith and the confidence that the concerns that have been addressed that are worrying some of our residents that are here with us tonight are being taken into consideration and are of the utmost importance to us and to our staff members here in the city of Boynton Beach. Thank you very much.
Sheriff Pinserga, you have any questions or just comments?
I have no questions for the applicants at this time. However, I want to say, as many of you know, I was elected and sworn in in the last meeting. In that time, I listened attentively, carefully to each of your concerns. I looked you in the eye, and I understand this is an emotional situation. It is your homes, after all. I understand that. But when we are making critical decisions, you know, I know, that we need to remove emotion out of the equation. I understand why there is emotion, but it needs to be removed from the final decision process. We have heard the legal aspect of the situation, and I have been provided, I have read the staff report, the technical aspects on the question of drainage and traffic. These are technical questions, and I trust in our professionals of the city staff, and they have cleared this project. For this reason, and this reason alone, I am in favor of this project.
Well, I got questions, so. You know, my main question last time was, is that how much does the retainage area hold? You know, having the geometrical figures, how many feet wide, how many feet long, and how many feet depth, gives us the square footage, or cubed footage, and that's about one cubed foot equals about seven gallons. So do we have that number?
I, I do not have that number. No.
All right. Does the engineer have that number?
We can have him try to answer it. I can't answer it this way. It will hold 100-year, three, three-day storm.
But I, I don't know what that means.
Which is, which is what the requirements are.
I, I want to, yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joe Pike. I am in the engineer on the job, and I, and I did do my homework. I recognize you asked this last time. So 100-year storm applied over the site actually equates to about 1.6, a little bit more than 1.6 million gallons. Now, that's still a hard number for me to wrap my head around, so the best way I can describe 1.6 million gallons is if you consider a relatively standard-sized swimming pool, 15 feet wide, 30 feet long, about four and a half feet deep, that holds 15,000 gallons. So to, it would require over 107 of those standard-sized swimming pools to equal the amount of storage we have on site. Another way to look at it is for each and every home that we have on site, you'd have to fill up over four of those same swimming pools before a drop would spill out onto our neighbors. I'm not sure if that helps, but that's.
Well, then, if it's, if 1.6 is required, what do you guys have?
1.6 million gallons, we have, I'm not sure how much over that. Again, the requirement for all of the surrounding developments is less.
Oh, no, no, no.
We, we meet, we meet over the 1.6 million gallons. We're, we're beyond that. By how many gallons, I can't tell you.
Colin wants to say something.
I just want to say, the way you actually calculate that is in acre-feet of storage, and that's something that's done in final design. They'll calculate the actual acre-feet, plus what they call the freeboard on the pond, so they have to have a little bit of distance above the pond to account for any extra. The problem is acre-feet can be converted to gallons. Engineers don't do that. That's not a normal thing engineers do. We use acre-feet. So, I'm sorry.
But it's, you know, I'm not, right, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, and so, you know, that's kind of where I want to make sure.
So to tell you, to give you an example, our water tower is a million gallons. That's what a million gallons looks like.
So you're saying there's a water tower and a half that's going to be on the, this property?
Yes, the, the drainage area that they've shown us on the sizing is a water tower and a half of, of water that could be held in it.
Okay. Because it's, how long is the project? I know it's, it's five, you know, what percentage of the, I guess, the drainage area in acres? Better yet.
You know, honestly, I'm not sure I looked at it that way. I mean, I, well, actually, the, the outside, it was about .93, as I recall, about .93 to the top, and then the bottom was, I believe it was about .3. I can certainly get those numbers for you.
Okay. And then how deep is the, the berm supposed to be?
The, the actual retention area is five feet deep.
Okay.
Our berm is, has a top elevation of 13.5 feet. Now, we just build that where it's lower. The areas like on the west side against Village of Gulf, it's already higher than that, so we don't have to build a berm on that side.
Okay.
But there will be a continuous berm.
That's, that's over 2 million gallons. My brother. That's over 2 million gallons. My rough math. That sounds fine, because that's kind of where I was asking, you know, for the numbers if, you know, so everybody can understand that if it's 1.6 million is what the berm is supposed to hold, and it's holding 2 million, I can understand numbers. And so 100-year flood doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean anything to me. So thank you. That definitely, you know, leaves a lot of my concerns regarding the water retention areas. One of the other things that someone mentioned was regarding the responsibility. You said you have a private easement. Did that private easement include any sort of payment system to using the private road?
System?
Payment, you know, like...
Payment system.
You know, the fact is, is that the Baileys had, you know, maybe two cars once a day, twice a day to use the road. And, you know, that really didn't affect the road too much. Now you're talking 25 homes, you know. Is there some sort of payment mechanism that the new HOA or joining Serrano's HOA to pay for their private road use?
Not from what I have seen on the plat, no.
Okay. And so that's something that I'd like to make a condition, is that this new development has to pay something to use the private road. I think, you know, that would make sense to me, because you're using someone else's property for free. That's not what, you know, doesn't make too much sense.
We are using that property as it's been platted, as it's been designated, as it was required when Serrano came through the development process and through this process to be approved. I'm sure that was a condition of approval, that that access be allowed to be there for, not just the Baileys, for the development of that property.
I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying in the senses that what if they say, you know what, we're going to start charging you a toll every time?
Then they would be in conflict with what the plat is saying. City Attorney can chime in on it.
Please, yeah.
I do need to chime in, because the condition you're suggesting is outside the scope of what's required under the code, number one. And secondly, the issue of access over that easement that's been recorded and is reflected in the plat ends up being a private concern of the adjacent property owners, not of the city.
So basically, if the private property owners or Serrano HOA would have to sue your company, you know, sue it because they're saying you're causing damage to the road, whether it be just for the, you know, after the construction's done, because they have that right. And so that's kind of where I'm trying to get that responsibility. You know, I'm not going to say that you have to do this, because I just heard that I can't make suit. But it's in the senses that I'd like to make a condition that there's a meeting between the new HOA or the developer and the Serrano HOA, so that they can work together regarding the construction and certain building hours. Because I think we allow, what, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM? And, you know, these are, a lot of people aren't waking up at 7:00 o'clock, that I'd like to make it a minimum, you know, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, you know, during winter hours. If your construction won't have that. But I'd like to have at least a minimum start time of 8:00 AM, when the trucks start rolling in and waking people up. If that's something that's...
I understand the concern. I don't know if...
It's your dole. Yeah.
That's fine. The, to address your concern, in my presentation, we were talking about the traffic calming, talking about the signage, talking about the fence along the south side. All of those things were at the request of Serrano, which we're agreeing to do.
Okay.
So we most definitely have to go meet with them. We recognize we're going through their community to get there. It's the only way we can get there.
Right.
So it's certainly not an ideal situation for access, but it's the access that we have, the only legal access that we have.
And so that's kind of my concern, is that the access, you know, you have access to build it, but once it's built and the developer leaves, that you put something in place that the developer can do for the future homeowners, that there's a payment for the roads, just like how everybody who buys in Serrano has an HOA.
I do know that if there is damage done to the road through the construction, that's going to get repaired. Through the traffic calming, there's going to be portions of the road that are going to be modified. So there's going to have to be that resurfacing, if you will. We're going to have to connect into a manhole for the sewer connection. So that stuff is standard construction procedure, which we're going to adhere to.
Okay. So let me see if I can make my question a little bit differently. Does the developer plan on providing Serrano any sort of payment for the perpetual use of the road?
I thought maybe he would have come in, but...
Okay, so that's...
There's been no discussion about that, no.
That's something I'd like to, you know, have the developer make that discussion, because as moving forward, you know, like they said, these are our neighbors, and you're, you know, having that, you know, it's not a public road where everybody pays for it. You're requiring these 47 houses to pay for these 25 houses, egress and egress, and there's no payment system. It doesn't make sense to me. So I'd like to make sure that the developer's willing to have that discussion, not to be unreasonable, but that there's some sort of payment mechanism for the upkeep of the ingress and egress.
We'll have the discussion.
Okay. There was a comment regarding the tree situation. And so is, does there plan to be, you know, for the drainage area, does there plan to be trees there, or is it just sod, and that the HOA is going to be required to maintain the sod?
Within the drainage area itself?
Yeah.
It's predominantly sod. There's a few existing trees that were, the design is to work around those, to leave those in place.
Okay.
That will fall out as we continue through the permitting process.
Okay. You know, I'd like, you know, as much trees as possible, you know, using a forester, because, you know, part of the, you know, the trees soak up the water as well. The question regarding the publication, and so because it's an ordinance, it had to be published in a newspaper 10 days before this meeting. Is that correct? And do we have the date that it was published?
Those publications are done by the city, so I'd let them, let staff respond.
Well, I mean, that's something that we need to know, because we can't say that we did it unless we know when it was.
I could say that I reviewed it as it worked its way through the agenda to get to the commission meeting, and it met the notice requirements. I can't tell you the date that it was published.
But if, but if we can't figure out that actual publication, then this is not in compliance. So...
You mean here on the fly without those records in front of us, the answer is, I can't, because I don't bring those records to meetings?
But no, what I'm saying, if we don't have the records, that's, I understand that. But if they can show that there was never a publication, because we don't have the publication here, then this would not meet our, the state standards, correct?
Mayor, I'm uncomfortable answering that question, because that's a matter, I'm not going to advise the public on how to sue the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't know how else to say it directly.
That's fine. You don't have to answer all questions. Yes, Amanda?
Amanda Basili, Principal Planner. This was advertised 10 days before the P&amp;D meeting, and we did receive...
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's try again. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sure. This was advertised 10 days before the P&amp;D meeting, and I reviewed the notice. And it was, we received the affidavit of notice also, as we require with all site plans.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. And I think that's it. You know, I looked at Mark Julian's homes on his website, and this is, these are Class A homes that are coming in. And I'm excited that we're going to have some more single-family homes for homeownership for the growing that Boynton Beach is doing. You know, like I said, is that, you know, there's six houses in the Village of Gulf that are affected on this. There's about 12 homes in the lakes of Silver Estate. And, you know, I understand your concerns, that you might have lowering of property valuation. You might have damage to your house. There might be pests. There might be mold. And so that's the point, that we're relying on our city staff and engineering to make sure that all of those concerns are alleviated. You know, my main concern earlier was the drainage issue, and we have an extra 400,000 gallons that the drainage area is going to hold compared to what is required in a 100-year flood. And that's kind of what we can plan for, because we don't plan for sea levels rising afoot, you know, the polar ice caps melting. We don't plan for all that, that we know could happen. And so that's kind of where I'm at, is that, you know, working with the developers though is the better way to get as much as you can to make sure that this is the best project. You know, Palm Land, I don't think has any sidewalks or any bike lanes. And, you know, that's something that hopefully the developer will work with, with the city, so that the Serrano and the new property, or new community, has the walkway, not on the road, to go to our barrier-free park and tennis center. Because, you know, even though these homes don't have tennis, you know, courts, these are, you know, very nice homes, and hopefully they'll play tennis at our tennis center and visit a lot of our other parks and recreation and go to our restaurants. And that's kind of where we're looking at, is that we are a growing city, and this is part of the aspects of the growing. There's going to be some pains. So, you know, I'm excited for this project. And I'll ask the Commission if they have any final comments before we proceed with a motion to approve.
Mayor, can I interrupt for one thing?
Yes.
There was a reference to conditions of approval, and staff does work very hard to make certain that the public is protected by the addition of conditions of approval. And I think it's appropriate to have on the record what those conditions are and to make sure the applicant concurs with them.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, Amanda Basili, Principal Planner. Staff did review today, the site plan that you guys saw today. To clarify, you will be approving the site plan that was initially published. And if you are desiring the changes that you saw today, staff does recommend that you add these six conditions of approval onto your motion. These will essentially take the changes you saw today and make them spatially permitted. So those conditions, and I'll just read them. I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me, so I'm going to read off the screen. Number one is eliminate one residential lot and have a maximum of 25 residential units. Remove Model A from the allowable model types. Brad did not talk about that, but in his revision, he did eliminate one of the types of models that they were permitting initially. Three is relocate lots. So lots 1 through 14 are along the west side of Country Lake Trail, and lots 15 through 25 are along the east side. That represents the change of losing the pool, adding the two lots along the west side, and then the elimination of one lot along the east side. Number four is expand the drainage area to wrap the northeast corner of the parcel and enhance the area with additional landscaping, including shade and flowering trees. Remember that the engineering comments for the 100-year flood plane is still in the conditions of approval. That's why you don't have an actual dimension on this, because it will be adjusted to meet code. And then number five is provide an amenity tract adjacent to the drainage area, and provide benches, a pavilion, and an outdoor kitchen. And number six, provide HOA documentations that allow private pools within each lot.
Yes.
And just to clarify, the applicant also specified that they would put a fence on the eastern portion of the property with landscape buffer as well?
Yes. So we didn't see that represented in the plan. So if there are additional, I actually wrote a couple of them down that are not included in, weren't included in my review. One was the addition of traffic calming, and the other was new signage and a fence along the southern property boundary of Serrano. So those were not included in my review. You would have to add those onto the motion as well.
Okay. And then one more question for the applicant's representation. Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
With regards to the issues of parking, what was stated from one of the residents of Serrano with on-street parking as a result of people occupying their garages for storage purposes as opposed to their intended use, which is for automobile parking, I know we had a similar issue in the townhouses I live in. And in our HOA documents, it makes clear that you are not allowed to use your garage for storage purposes for the explicit reason that if you subvert the intent of your garage for parking, then you create street parking problems. Is the applicant willing to put into the HOA documents that garages are to be used for their intended purposes, which is to park automobiles and not for storage? I know, again, in my HOA, if you choose to live in our development and you use your garage for storage, you, one, can be cited. Two, you will not be giving an on-street parking pass. So it forces people to use their garage, which is the intended use of a garage. Is that something that...
Understood. Let me, before I step out there again to ask that question, I do need to clarify that each of these driveways are going to be large enough for the two cars that are required for each unit. So each unit in effect with the garage and use of the garage has four spaces. So with a two-car garage.
Do driveways have the capacity for two cars?
Yes.
Okay.
They do. So it's a little excessive. I think that's something that as the HOA continues on, if it becomes a parking problem, the HOA could enforce that themselves.
I'm going to speak up. I would not be in favor of making that type of stipulation. There's a difference between townhomes and apartments that require that type of parking issue and single-family homes. I think somebody who's purchasing a single-family home should have the right to put whatever they want in their garage and not have to be relegated to not being allowed to park or do whatever they want. I think that's the luxury of having a single-family home compared to living in a townhome or living in an apartment and having those regulations and stipulations put against you. So I would not be in favor of making that type of stipulation with the development.
Agreed.
Go on.
As far as the, as far as the six conditions?
Yes, sir.
We're in agreement with those conditions. They, most of that was included in my presentation anyway. So we would be in agreement with that. And I believe the six-foot chainlock fence along the eastern property line is another that we committed to.
Mayor, just so the public understands, there's a development order that will be issued. Attached to that development order are conditions of approval that are being discussed now. And there is a section that we added within the last six months that says additional representations and commitments that captures these kinds of additional things, like the one that Mr. Saberson asked for, that the applicant consented to.
All right. And so how would that be made known to the public?
There will be a document that has that done, that there'll be a development order, and then conditions of approval attached to it. That list will expand based upon the additional staff comments tonight, which the applicant agreed to, and the few that were made by the public that the applicant agreed to. So they'll be able to see it in writing. It will be available through the clerk's office or the Development Department.
Okay. And I just want to make clear, the traffic calming areas is from, all the way from, I guess, Charter to Palm Land to Country Trail?
It would just be on Country Trail as it goes through Serrano. There's probably two or three locations where we could put it to not disrupt some driveways.
Okay.
But we'll work with Serrano on finding those locations and making that improvement.
All right.
Palm Land is City Road.
Right. And so that's what I was hoping for.
Impact fees.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve proposed ordinance number 19-001. No move.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pinserga?
Yes.
Mayor Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Oles?
Aye.
Ordinance 19-002, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as Country Trail and described herein, owned by M2D Country Trails LLC, changing the land use designation for medium residential, MR5, maximum density five dwelling units to acre to low-density residential, LDR, maximum density 7.5 development units per acre, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
All those, favor states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. May I have a roll call, please? May I have a roll call, please? May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brand?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 19-003, an ordinance of...
Five to zero. I said nay.
Ordinance 19-003, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as the Country Trail from agricultural residential Palm Beach County AR to plan unit development PUD, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
No move. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
And Mayor Brand?
Yes.
Have item C, which is the PUD new site plan, which requires a mo, a separate motion.
And so the amended site plan to include the 25 homes is what I'll need?
To, to, it should be a motion to approve with all conditions of approval, as stated publicly.
Okay. As amended as well, because the, the site plan that we have on record is not the one that matches. Is that correct?
Conditions create the site plan, the alternative plan.
So may I have a motion to approve all site plans as stated, or all conditions as stated? No move. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those, all those oppose?
Nay.
Hearing one, the motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Our next item is the City Manager's Report. Discuss budget workshops, dates and times. Last year, the Commission held budget workshops in July. The dates below would accommodate the same meetings for this upcoming budget cycle. I am not able to make this. I am out of the, the country from the, the 7th to the 24th of July. So, the options are, is we, there are three days on the 29th, 30th, and 31st, or that I can make it, which would be the, the 5th, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of July. And did Tim say that that's possible?
No. No, we need to have our tentative millage and fire assessment to the property appraiser's office by July 26.
Okay.
The fire assessment may even need to be a little bit sooner, because we have to get that to GSG to then prepare the data file to transmit to the county. So we weren't able to accommodate any later than that.
All right.
Sorry. We tried.
It's okay. Well, Vice Mayor, you'll be, at least get to have one meeting. I'll do my best. All right. And is, and then we'll come back at the next...
...the times like we did last year, and that worked nicely. I think it gave people that work an opportunity to participate, obviously, in the workshops in the evening time.
And then the next thing is the, what's it called? The budget pre-me, meeting.
I'll bring back, I'll, I'll poll each of you on your availability. That Monday of that week is Memorial Day, so we're coming off the Memorial Day weekend, but we'll probably aim for that Tuesday, and I'll check with your calendars...
Okay.
...tomorrow and see how that works for everybody.
Well, isn't that a, a P, a planning and development meeting?
The last Tuesday?
Yeah.
It's the fourth? Okay. Then we conflict with that. So we either do a different location...
Nah.
Or a different date.
I was saying on the Wednesday, the 29th.
And, yeah, that's fine. I'll just make sure each of you that works.
The record states I won't do it.
Well, and I know, I think you were going to have a discussion on the 16th, if that's something the Commission wants to continue to do.
Yeah, and so we'll see if, then the, I don't know if the, the 22nd would be better. And that way, Commissioner McCray would have his week off.
Thank you.
So we'll look at the 22nd.
When we prepare the, the agenda for the 16th, we'll...
Yeah, look at the 15th or the 22nd as well. Or the 22nd. All right. And then the last item is to discuss the possibility of having cornerstone for the Freemasons at the new city hall building. I was fortunate enough to be at one of the Freemason meetings where they are honoring our firefighters, paramedics, police officers, and detective, yeah, detectives. It's interesting that Boynton Beach was founded in the Freemasons Lodge back in 1920, and one of the reasons why we have had a library for so long is because of the donation that the Freemasons gave to the city back in 1942. They've held a long position, making sure that government is working for the people. And so I'd like to see if that there's no cost to the city to have a cornerstone laid by the, the Freemasons and get some more information from them. And so I'm asking for consensus to, to have the city have negotiations with the Freemasons.
Let me say something.
Yes.
First of all, you know, I'm in favor of them laying a cornerstone, but I don't want them laying anything where it gives them the preview, like they was responsible for building Town Square. When we did Town Square, they was the ones that came before us, they wanted to sell properties for a half a million dollars. So they need to negotiate and come back with something that's acceptable. I'm just saying, they might have started out in their residence or whatever, but we've grown from that, and, and I'm just saying, we're going to open up a caveat for other people, have your discussion, because what it was, that they really tried to stick us with a half a million dollars for some property, you know, that we already own anyway. So I, I'm just saying, you know, let's be fair with this.
Okay. Commissioner Katz? I'd just request more time to, to kind of look into the history with the city, because, yeah, I, my main concern is, while I understand that at a point in time long ago, they contributed the land, that they do have absolutely no affiliation or part in the actual buildings. So I just, I'd request more time, and this building's not going to be there for a while, I think, so. Yep. So I'm just asking that staff can have discussions to get you more information. Is that something you're okay with?
Yeah, they could discuss.